The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good morning, Misses Shephard.
Morning Commissioners. Commissioners, this morning's first witness is Douglas Humphries, CSC OAM. He is appearing this morning via video link. May he be sworn in and all given the affirmation?
Do you, Douglas Humphries, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Aye to.
Mr Humphries, certain deletions which are marked as redactions have been made to your statement, and in light of those deletions, I understand that you wish for clarity to add one sentence to paragraph fifty of your statement. Is that correct? And I might ask the operator to display paragraph fifty of Mr Humphries' redacted statement.
Oh, look, to be honest, we've had a number of versions of this. Let me get another version up. I said, I think it was something after the merits review comprises the making of any decision that is a correct or preferable decision. I can't remember what I was going to add to that. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr Humphries. Can I perhaps prompt you?
Sure.
Would you like to add this? This could be achieved by giving jurisdiction to the Administrative Appeal Tribunal.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr Humphries. I tend to that statement in its redacted form.
Is Mr Humphries represented or not? Sorry, yeah. We'll accept that into evidence and it'll be allocated the next lot of numbers, the next number rather.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, aside from some introductory matters, there are three primary topics that I proposed to canvass with Mr Humphries this morning. First, the discipline system within the military justice system in defence. Secondly, the administrative system in defence. And thirdly, the possible improvements that might be made to those systems. Mr Humphries, I might start with your experience and in particular, your more recent legal experience. You are presently a sitting judge of the Federal Circuit and Family Court of Australia. When were you appointed to that court?
I was appointed to the court in March of 2019.
And in which division of that court do you primarily sit? And what type of matters do you typically hear?
I sit in the mainly general federal law division, although I do occasionally sit in the family law division. I hear matters that relate to fair work, migration, bankruptcy, consumer protection, admiralty, and the like.
Do you hear many judicial review applications?
All of the migration matters that I hear, which are probably about sixty to seventy per cent of my caseload, comprise judicial review of decisions made by either the Immigration Assessment Authority or the Administrative Appeals Tribunal in its migration review division.
And am I correct that prior to that, you were appointed as the principal registrar and CEO of the Commonwealth Administrative Appeals Tribunal in 2003? And that you were subsequently appointed as principal member of the Veterans Review Board in 2010?
That's correct. I did have one year in 2018 where I was the president in a full-time capacity of the Law Society of New South Wales. That's an elected position.
Thank you. And for how long did you otherwise sit on that review board? And what type of matters does the board typically hear and determine?
The board is the first level merits review body in relation to decisions by the Repatriation Commission or the Military Rehabilitation and Compensation Commission. It currently does not have jurisdiction in relation to the Safety Rehabilitation and Compensation Commission. Those decisions involved review of decisions in both liability and in relation to the quantum of compensation.
And could I move to your service experience? Am I correct that you joined the Army Reserve in February 1976 and were commissioned as an officer in the Royal Australian Infantry in September 1979?
That's correct.
And after being promoted to the rank of major, you went on the inactive reserve in 1991, but transferred back to the active reserve in 2009?
Correct.
And in 2009, you transferred to the Australian Army Legal Corps. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you please tell the Commissioners about your defence legal experience, including the positions you have occupied and now occupy?
After completing initial legal training, I was posted as a staff officer grade two at the rank of major to Headquarters Seventeen, what is now Seventeen Sustainment Brigade, where I provided a wide range of advice to both command and members in relation to discipline, administrative sanctions, MECC reviews, and other matters as required. I was promoted to lieutenant colonel and I was transferred to the Headquarters Forces Command as an SO1 legal. There, I did a wide range again of disciplined administrative matters. I also appeared in three court marshals, two before Defence Force magistrates and one as a general court marshal. In 2020, I was promoted to the rank of colonel and I became the panel leader for the New South Wales Army Reserve Legal Panel in New South Wales. Following a reorganisation of Defence Legal in 2022, I was appointed as the inaugural senior reserve officer, Army Command Support Legal Panel. And I continue to serve in that role. On being appointed to the bench, I ceased doing individual assistance and I now only provide advice to command. I provided advice on administrative law matters to both the chief of the army on a number of occasions and on one occasion to the chief of navy.
Thank you. In terms of the advice that you provided to command and members, does that also include advice relating to termination notices?
Yes.
And finally, before we move to the substance of your examination, can I just confirm that you were also awarded a conspicuous service cross for outstanding devotion to duty in the 2023 Australia Day Honours list?
Yes. Before we go on to our, the main evidence, there's a couple of things I'd just like to emphasise and acknowledge, if I might?
Yes.
Can I firstly acknowledge the recent deaths of four Australian servicemen in a helicopter accident in Townsville and the recent deaths of three American servicemen in another aircraft accident in the Northern Territory this weekend? Also, I acknowledge the injuries that have been occasioned to other American servicemen as a result of that latter incident. Can I indicate that it brings home significantly to me that even in peacetime training, there are considerable risks and whilst everything is done to mitigate those risks, what we do to make it real involves inherent risk and unfortunately, on occasions like this, can result in the deaths of servicemen. To me, it also indicates that we need to treat injuries and or deaths occasioned as a result of training accidents in exactly the same way that we would treat deaths or injuries that occur on operations. From my point of view, if you are injured in a training accident in peacetime, the result is exactly the same as if you are injured in operations. I also need to stress that I am not appearing in any official capacity, either as a member of the court or as an army officer. And anything that I say here today is my own personal opinion and does not represent either my view as a judge or as a, nor does it represent official defence policy. I also thought I might just provide an update on a matter that I touched on the last occasion I gave evidence. And that relates to the processing of claims by the Department of Veterans Affairs. In mid-September last year, I put a claim in for plantar fasciitis. That is an injury that occurs to the foot. It is a matter that is subject to what is called straight through processing in that it should not require any great degree of examination, provided there has been service, provided the injury is diagnosed. It should just be processed, as I said, straight through. That claim is still outstanding. I made inquiries with the Department of Veterans Affairs in February this year when it reached, or late February when it reached a six-month delay. I was unable to get an indication from them as to when the matter would be processed. Notwithstanding, it was a straightforward claim. It has been characterised as a non-priority claim and they were unable to give me any date by which they felt it would be likely to be processed, assessed and/or either accepted or rejected. It's coming up to 12 months next month. And I have heard nothing from the Department of Veterans Affairs since my last inquiries in February this year. It's not a particularly satisfactory custom experience, I might add.
Sorry to hear that, Mr Humphries, but I thank you very much for your update. Can I move to some military justice matters and in particular, the administrative system and the discipline system? Mr Humphries, as you know, there are two primary systems within what I'll broadly describe as Defence's military justice system, and those are the two that I just mentioned, the discipline system and the administrative system. Are you able to provide the Commissioners with a very brief summary of the differences between those two systems?
The discipline system exists, and I make it quite clear that having, or the maintenance and imposition of military discipline is absolutely essential to the creation of an effective fighting force. So you have no problem, from my point of view, of the need for a military discipline system. Within the Defence Force Discipline Act, there are a range of what I would call service offences that relate to such matters as insubordination, failing to appear at a place of parade, being absent without leave. These are matters that are unique to the military. You then have incorporated into the Defence Force Discipline Act what I would call criminal law matters, which could be prosecuted in criminal law courts. And these are what we call Jarvis Bay offences that are incorporated into the military law system. So it's possible to prosecute in the Defence Force Discipline System significant and serious matters, criminal law matters, for which periods of imprisonment within civilian prisons are available. The adverse administrative sanctions system exists and runs in parallel to the discipline system. The administrative sanction system enables a series of sanctions to be imposed upon people. They can start off with either a formal warning, which is a period by which a person is put on notice that they need to improve their performance. Otherwise, further action could be taken. It includes the capacity to involve a censure. It involves ultimately that a person can be terminated from the Defence Force on the basis that their service is no longer in the interests of the Defence Force. So there's a wide range of sanctions that can be imposed under the administrative sanction system, which are, as I said, they tend to run unfortunately in parallel to the discipline system in some cases. So for example, a person may be prosecuted under the Defence Force Discipline Act. A penalty can be imposed upon them and it may well be that following the imposition of that penalty, an administrative sanction will then be taken or imposed upon the person, which may in some cases be in fact even greater than the penalty that was imposed under the Discipline Act.
Thank you very much, Mr Humphries. I'll come to a few of those issues in a moment, but before I do that, can I just ask the operator to display paragraph twenty-one of your statement?
Yes.
Now, you referred just now, but also there to the necessity of the promotion and maintenance of a discipline system within defence. But you also refer to a tension point with the application of that discipline power. Can you please tell the Commissioners about what you have described there as the tension point?
The problem is always that, and I think it has evolved, and as the Australian society has evolved, the expectations of what is fair and just have changed with it. You know, I could say that when I joined, if one was charged with a discipline offence, one would expect to be convicted because of course, it was always only ever said that if you weren't guilty, you wouldn't be charged. There is now a, I think, a view that people want to not only see that the military discipline and administrative law system is fair, but they also have expectations that there will be mechanisms to ensure that decisions that are made can be properly reviewed and if necessary, reviewed externally. For example, decisions in relation to employment in the civilian community can be taken to the Fair Work Commission. They can be challenged in my court. There are merits review avenues available for a vast variety of decisions made by the Commonwealth Government at the Administrative Appeals Tribunal. They include decisions up to, decisions made personally by ministers. We have a situation whereby there is a very limited merits review available to members of the Defence Force in relation to administrative, adverse administrative action. By that I mean, if one, for example, is terminated within, by adverse administrative action, the only avenue is by way of redress of grievance to the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force, who only has the power to investigate and make recommendations. Those recommendations can either be accepted or ignored by commanders. The only other alternative open then is to challenge the decision on judicial review in the federal court.
Can I ask then, what do you think that the solution to that issue is?
You asked me earlier, and this is only a suggestion. In my view, there needs to be a fair, just, economical and quick merits review mechanism, which is external to defence in relation to decisions, adverse administrative decisions, particularly in relation to termination. I think that's what contemporary Australians expect. I believe that the Administrative Appeals Tribunal is the ideal body to actually undertake that. There was a recommendation of a, I think it's 2005 Senate Report into Military Justice, that considered that, but ultimately did not actually make that recommendation.
I might.
Judge, can you avoid answering or giving that evidence? There's an objection on the ground of parliamentary privilege in respect of the report of the Senate Committee, I gather. Is that the point?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I thought it was a public report. Anyway, that's a matter for the Commonwealth.
The objection's been taken and I don't think there's really much point in arguing about it at the moment.
All right, that's fine.
Well, you were talking about the, an external review mechanism in the Administrative Appeals Tribunal. Can I ask, what do you see are the challenges in bringing that change about?
Well, first of all, there would need to be legislative amendments. There would need to be an appetite by government to actually take that step. I would imagine that there would be an unwillingness of command to actually cede that power to an external administrative body. However, as I said, if decisions of ministers of the Crown can be reviewed by the Administrative Appeals Tribunal, there is no reason why decisions in relation to termination of Defence Force members could not be also subject to external merits review.
Well, can I ask, what does that tribunal look like? So for example, is it a member sitting alone? Is it a three-member panel?
It can, depending upon the matter, it can consist of up to a three-member panel. There are normally a legal member who will sit as either the senior member or as a deputy president. On occasions, it can include judicial officers sitting as deputy presidents. For example, judges of the federal court and the Family Court of Australia can sit as deputy presidents within the AAT on a persona designata basis. And then there are expert members. So for example, in a pharmaceutical case involving drug matters, the AAT has the capacity to turn around and have an expert pharmacologist sitting on the panel and they appoint people particularly for their expertise in some jurisdictions. So from my point of view, it would be possible, if you had a separate military division, to appoint people who had military experience and the capacity to turn around and bring that expertise into merits review within the tribunal.
To what extent do you think the members should as a mandatory, let's say, consideration? Or essentially, the criteria for membership to that panel has to be that they have military experience?
I think it's desirable that we, that in a multi-member panel, they should have experience. There are plenty of people around, like myself, who have both military and legal experience.
And is one of the reasons that you've suggested the AAT is the cost consequences?
Yes. If one is going to go to the federal court, it's on judicial review. That is a very, very difficult path to tread. I've made reference in my statement to what legal unreasonable sent tails, and that is basically a decision that's so unreasonable that no reasonable decision maker could come to it. The grounds that are set out for the basis of termination are so wide, they are virtually impossible to challenge. Although on the odd occasion, people have managed to get up and I've made reference to a couple of matters, including the matter of Randall in my statement. Also, the difficulty that you have is that there are adverse cost consequences. And I would imagine a matter that was, in my experience, you're looking at anything up to fifty to sixty or more thousand dollars in adverse cost consequences if one is unsuccessful in challenging a matter in the federal court. Of course, the AAT is a no-cost jurisdiction.
So am I correct then in saying that you regard the existing redress of grievance process with the overlay of the potential for judicial review in the federal court to be an inadequate avenue for those members, the subject of administrative termination?
The issue that I've indicated is that many members simply are unwilling to roll the dice because of the possibility of an adverse cost order. So there may well be matters where there was the possibility that a successful legal challenge could take place, but they're simply not willing to do so. And to be honest, if I was advising a member, I would be very reluctant if they were a private soldier, for example, who has limited financial resources, to advise them to go to the federal court, even though I may regard their chances of success as being reasonable. It requires a certain degree of courage to be prepared to roll the dice, given the fairly strict or very strict criteria to actually get up, to actually run a matter. So Randall was one, and I've set it out in some detail as to what took place there.
Would you like to expand on that example for the Commissioners?
Well, one officer, Randall, was an IT Systems Administrator. He was deployed and it was alleged that he had improperly accessed the, I think it was the email files of a number of people. He was initially charged with about fifty-six offences. So I'm just having a look here, paragraph forty-two. He was on twenty-eight charges of unauthorised access or modification of restricted data. He'd originally been charged with forty-six offences, eighteen were abandoned prior to trial. He was convicted of eleven charges and sentenced on each charge to either be reprimanded or severely reprimanded. And I make the comment that in the scale of punishments, this would be described as relatively low level. He appealed his convictions to the Defence Force Discipline Appeals Tribunal. In the interim, however, he was issued with a termination notice on the basis that his retention would not be in the interest of the Defence Force. That termination notice was withdrawn as a result of some adverse commentary by Justice Tracy, who was then the president of the DEFDAT panel, that it was highly inappropriate that they should seek to actually terminate him when an appeal against those convictions was on foot before DEFDAT. On 10 July 28, DEFDAT actually quashed all of Randall's convictions on the basis his job description as the Assistant Administrator authorised access to the subject material, which was the subject of the charges. However, following his acquittal, he was issued with another termination notice and despite his representations, discharged from the ADF. He then went to the federal court seeking judicial review of his termination notice. As I said, I thought it was very courageous. A mediation was unsuccessful. Defence resisted Randall's action, including taking procedural objections. In a judgment on the 17th of September 2020, Justice Collier determined an interlocutory matter where defence sought to exclude from the court's consideration a significant amount of material that had been part of the disciplinary proceedings. It's of interest, the termination notice sought to rely on the exact same material as the quashed convictions. Justice Collier, significantly in my point of view, ordered that costs in the interlocutory application should be paid by defence. That's a very unusual outcome. Normally, costs will be reserved and follow the main event. And I'm advised that it was listed for substantive trial in 2021, but was settled on a confidential terms just prior to the trial. I'm not aware of what those terms were. I've got no, I've read the judgment of Justice Collier. But I suggest that Randall's instructive in a number of ways. Command had no hesitation using adverse administrative action to impose a penalty being termination of service, which was greater than the penalty that was open to the disciplinary tribunal, yet not imposed upon conviction because he was only reprimanded. But command terminated his service for the same events, notwithstanding he was acquitted of the charges. I also indicate, as I said, defence has got deep pockets and it might be suggested that his, or the way that they ran the matter was not consistent with the Commonwealth model litigant guidelines.
Thank you, Mr Humphries. Out of interest, are you familiar with the Fulton case handed down by the federal court in the last two weeks? It was an appeal from an administrative termination.
No, I'm not.
No, thank you. What is your view? You just alluded to it with the Randall case, but in terms of your view about the use of the administrative termination power in this way, what is your view about the use of the administrative termination power after a disciplinary tribunal proceeding has concluded? And the punishment imposed by that tribunal was something other than termination, even though that option was open to the tribunal?
My view is based on a number of matters, but I note that I have been influenced by the views of Justice Logan of the federal court, who is the president of the Defence Force Discipline Administrative Tribunal. He did a paper, I think in 2018, in which he was of the view that... in which he was of the view that it was, and it was entitled Administrative Discharge in the Lure of Military Disciplinary Proceeding Supportive of a Subversive, supportive or subversive of a relative justice system. He sets out a number of significant concerns as to the current practices with respect to the use of administrative discharge. He refers to Randall in that paper. He also makes reference to the matter of Lieutenant Karel Dubsky as a sequel to the notorious Jedi Knights scandal. In that matter, as I understand it from newspaper reports, Dubsky successfully sued the ADF in respect of his administrative discharge and settled on a confidential basis. In a more recent paper entitled March in the Guilty Bastard Administrative Action or Military Discipline, which was presented to the Advanced Military Administrative Law Subject of the University of Adelaide in two thousand and twenty-two, he suggests that the use of the termination power, where a person has been the subject of disciplinary proceedings and that termination was open but was not used by the Service Tribunal, means that it's in fact undermining the disciplinary system. And he goes into some considerable length in setting out his reasons. It's to be noted that, under the disciplinary system, a penalty has to be confirmed by a commander prior to it being instituted. A commander may not increase the penalty that's been imposed by the tribunal. A commander can only decrease it. The use of the administrative system to impose a penalty, which is termination from the Defence Force, or in the disciplinary area, it's called dismissal from the Defence Force, he suggests is in fact almost bordering on a contempt and is certainly undermining of the court process that takes place in the court martial.
Do you share the same views as Justice Logan in those papers?
Yes.
Can I ask a few of you about a slightly different scenario? What about the use of administrative termination after a member has been charged with a disciplinary offence? But while the disciplinary process is ongoing?
Again, I share Justice Logan's views and Justice Tracy's views that it's completely inappropriate. If an election is made to turn around and take a person to a disciplinary hearing, in my view, that process is separate and apart and should be respected.
Well, having regard to the issues we've been discussing, do you think that the early termination power in Regulation twenty-four of the Defence Regulation two thousand and sixteen should be tightened in some way?
It's difficult, and there's a balancing issue you have here. Defence is an employer as well as a defence force where discipline is necessary. You have to balance the needs of defence as an employer to be able to terminate people in exactly the same way as any civilian employer or the Australian public service might be able to actually terminate an employee. There are good reasons why there should be a termination power. I'm simply saying, from my point of view, it's going to be very difficult to tighten it. It's very, very wide in terms of the examples that are given. They range from workforce management through to poor performance, through to not being, or the retention of the person is damaging to defence's reputation. So, it's drawn in incredibly wide terms. It might be possible to tighten it. My view is, however, the better view is merits review, and I can actually justify why it is not in the interest of the Defence Force in a merits review situation.
So, really, your view about this, it's better to improve the review process rather than to restrict or remove the decision-making power to terminate from defence?
Yes.
Can I ask also, just in terms of your experience, what type of impact, if any, does the disciplinary proceedings or administrative termination have on a defence member's wellbeing?
It can have incredibly damaging impacts. For example, in the matter of Boyson, which I've made reference to in my subject, and I indicate that I was involved in that matter as second counsel. Boyson was convicted of a very serious offence. He was sentenced to, he was reduced from the rank of captain to lieutenant. He was dismissed from the Defence Force, and he was sentenced to a period of imprisonment in a civilian jail. Boyson was held at the Defence Force Correctional Establishment for a period of one month, which included a period over Christmas and the end of two thousand and eighteen. He was released while a review process took place, which included ultimately an appeal to the Defence Force Discipline Tribunal. I was not involved in that appeal, but that appeal was successful, and his conviction for a sexual assault was quashed. Justice Raritan and Justice Perry sat on that matter along with Justice Logan. By a majority decision, they found that they quashed the decision and, in fact, made comments that they had difficulty in understanding how the panel, and it was a general court martial, could have been satisfied even on the balance of probability that the offence had taken place. Boyson was subsequently discharged or terminated on the basis that retention was not in the interests of the Defence Force. And I also should add that I have permission from now Mr Boyson to actually talk about the matter, notwithstanding that it may involve a breach of his illegal professional privilege. He suffered a period of intense depression. And in fact, when I last spoke to him, had been unemployed since his termination from the Defence Force, notwithstanding the fact he was a highly qualified helicopter pilot prior to being charged with the offence. When I was at the Veterans Review Board, it was clear to me that people who were terminated from the Defence Force in circumstances where they were not happy, suffered far more likely to suffer a period of depression, anxiety or other issues.
Thank you. Before I leave the topic of administrative termination, can I just ask you one more question about a review process? What are your thoughts about the Defence Force Ombudsman? Does that provide an adequate avenue for review?
I've had very little experience with the Defence Force Ombudsman, so I really can't comment.
Thank you. Can I turn now to end very briefly noting the time, the disciplinary system? And you raise in your statement that, or an issue that you raise in your statement is that you believe that an accused defence member is placed at a significant disadvantage in a hearing before a general or restricted court martial than a civilian in the same circumstances? What are the features of the court martial system that lead you to hold that view?
Well, I want to make it very clear at the beginning, there was no criticism of anybody involved in the current court martial system. I think they work, everybody that's involved with it is very professional and work very hard. However, there are limits. First of all, in a restricted court martial has a panel of three, a general court martial has a panel of five. The panel either convict or acquit on the basis of a simple majority. So, in a general court martial, it's three out of five. The panel actually impose the penalty or the punishment. They're not required to give reasons. So, in Boyson's case, he was charged with a sexual assault pursuant to the relevant provisions of the ACT Crimes Act as a Jarvis Bay offence. He was convicted by a panel of five people on a simple majority. If he was in front of a civil court, he would have had a jury of twelve, and it would have had to have been a unanimous verdict. He would have been sentenced by the judge who would have been required to give reasons. The panel is not required to give reasons. These were the sorts of features that the Australian Military Courts sought to address. But with its falling over, in the case of Lainham Morrison, they've looped back to the old system of court marshals, which I think has been the subject of much criticism over the years. But let's be clear, that system works and it's lawful. It's whether or not it can be much better and more properly represent what people would expect if they were charged with a criminal offence. And I'm only talking about what I call criminal offences here. I'm not talking about what I call service discipline offences. I think we can, I'm not worried about those. What I'm worried about is somebody charged with a serious criminal offence and being court marshalled in those circumstances. Also, it's a feature of the court martial that the panel only comprises officers of the same or a superior rank. So, it's a very command-driven system. One might say that if a person is going to be convicted of a criminal offence, they should have a jury of their peers. And for a soldier, that may well include having NCOs on the panel as well.
Well, one of the recommendations that you make in your statement is to increase the panel in both a restricted and general court martial to twelve with unanimous verdict being required. Is that a realistic option within the personnel constraints of the current Defence Force?
It would not be a realistic option in circumstances where the panel was only to comprise officers. In my view, in order to implement that, you would have to increase the panel size, which would mean bringing in NCOs.
Can I ask you a few of you about this? Should civilians potentially form part of the jury?
In my view, if it's a military court, the answer is no. There are significant nuances that are related to service that a civilian, I think, would have difficulty grasping.
I'll ask you about one more recommendation before I ask the commissioners if they have any questions for you. That recommendation concerns the tightening of the jurisdiction of the Defence Force Discipline Act to limit the capacity of service tribunals to only hear matters where the service connection is clear and unambiguous. So, that's in your statement. Can I ask, how might that be achieved and where should the dividing line be?
That was brought about as a result of the High Court decision in Private R. In that decision, the High Court found, and it is undoubtedly correct, that the commission of any criminal law offence provided a sufficient service connection for it to be prosecuted within a military tribunal. Now, there were complications because of the extraterritorial reach of the Defence Force Discipline Act. But it really comes down to the willingness of the Office of the Director of Military Prosecutions. And I think at the moment, they're taking a very proper and pragmatic attitude that there needs to be a very clear service connection. So, in the Private R case, which was prosecuted, it involved an assault allegedly, or they found it was committed, by a service member on another service member who was his girlfriend within, at a civilian hotel while they were both off duty. So, the question that I raise is, is that a sufficient service connection? Is it a situation whereby, and I do not know whether or not the victim complained to civilian police, and civilian police declined to prosecute? Is it a situation whereby the service connection is removed? I just think that we need to have a very clear view, and it would require legislative amendment because of the impact of the decision in Private R, to try and provide some, what I call, left and right of arc as to what the service connection is, and to provide something a little bit more limited.
Do you have a view about what that left or right of arc might be?
Look, I think it's something that reasonable minds would disagree on. I think it's a situation whereby it can be looked at. And as I said, I'm probably fairly confident that the current ODMP has a fairly pragmatic attitude. And of course, they're statically independent, they can decline to turn around and do stuff. But I just think it seems to me to be very difficult to have a situation whereby there may be a complaint made to civil police relating to what I'll call a fairly remote matter. And if they decline to turn around and take an interest in the matter, the victim then has the option to complain where there's another service member involved to the military, and they can take action.
Thank you, I understand. Commissioners, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr Humphrey. I have just one question. It has been put to me by several people that I have seen now that we should do away with the administrative system altogether. Now, I heard your evidence that you think that there's a critical role for it. But the view that's been put is that because the administrative system seems so broad in terms of its interpretation and application, that we should just have, sorry, the Defence Force should just have the FDA to deal with matters and not have an administrative system altogether. So, I'm just wondering whether you have any comment on that.
I think there is a role for adverse administrative action. And I go to the situation, adverse administrative action, for example, might be taken against a trainee who has failed to meet training objectives. And so, there'll be issue with a termination notice because they are a fail to progress satisfactorily, such that their retention is not in the interests of the Defence Force. That's why I talk about the fact that defence is also an employer and has a reasonable right to be able to exercise as to who it chooses to employ. There can be circumstances where a person may have committed a series of what I would call minor disciplinary matters, whereby each taken individually is only attracted a relatively minor penalty. But what we're seeing is a course of conduct in relation to their suitability, including, for example, their suitability to be an NCO. That's where I think there is a role, and you've got to look at it from that point of view. I think where we get up to the situation where there are issues is where there is a decision taken in relation to a Defence Force Discipline Act, and then no termination occurs, which is an open penalty. And there's then a decision made to administratively impose a penalty that has in fact been considered by a disciplinary tribunal and, for reasons, rejected. But then is imposed anyway by management.
Thank you. And just one other question and apologies, this is my legal naivety. But is there any other circumstance where there is no option of a merits review across the law?
Oh, look, there are some categories of decisions made by, for example, the Minister of Immigration that are non-judicial. They, however, we have a very advanced administrative law system, and far more decisions are open to merits review than are not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Mr Humphries, you referred to a second paper by Justice Logan in two thousand and twenty-two. On a quick look through your statement, I couldn't see a reference to it. But is it at the same collection of his speeches as the two thousand and eighteen paper you referred to?
Yes, it is. And the reason why it was not referred to is my original statement was drafted in two thousand and twenty-one. And it's only been subsequently that I've actually found it and was drawn to my attention, and I got it and read it. It's there along with his original paper.
Thanks. In your oral evidence, my note, something you said earlier on, is that there needs to be a fair, just economical review of administrative decisions, particularly redismissals. Are there any other categories of decisions and dismissals that you think should be open to merits review?
Look, I think it particularly relates to terminations. Whether or not you wish to open it up to include censures and/or formal warnings or reductions in rank, it really depends on how much work you want them to do. But in my view, the most serious matters are terminations.
Okay. You may not be aware of it, but I think perhaps a couple of years ago, there was an inquiry in Canada by Madam Justice Arbour, and she made a recommendation. And she made a recommendation that sexual offences should not be determined in military courts, but only in civilian courts in Canada. We gather that that's probably difficult to implement in Canada because the provincial governments may not be particularly keen to use that jurisdiction. But do you have any view about whether the current situation here should change in such a way or not?
One of the current advantages of the military discipline system is that there are not delays. Then trials will normally be called on within six months of charges being preferred. That is not the case in relation to the civilian courts where there can be extraordinary delays in having matters heard. So it just seems to me that if you are going to maintain a service connection, that what you should try and do is replicate as best as you can the benefits of a civilian system, which is a jury of 12 unanimous verdicts, the judge imposes the penalty. You should be able to do that within the military justice system.
It's also been suggested to us that there is some merit in retaining jurisdiction in the military system if, for example, the parties in a civil criminal proceeding in effect resolve their differences or the complainant withdraws the complaint so the prosecution doesn't proceed. But nonetheless, for reasons of military discipline, the jurisdiction should still exist in the military sphere. Do you have any comment on that?
I would have extreme difficulty if a complainant elects not to go ahead with a civil matter. In my view, to force the complainant to actually have to give evidence in a military discipline matter would not be a good outcome for the complainant or the respondent.
This is a bit off to the periphery, but in our inquiries in America too, we discovered that such complaints are dealt with exclusively by the American military within their military court system. And they don't refer them at all to the civilian criminal courts. Do you have any view about that?
Well, as I said, I look at it from the point of view of what is the service connection? If there is a clear and obvious service connection, then they can be dealt with, but I think the protections need to be increased. And also, as I said, there are jurisdictional issues. It's the extraterritorial aspect of the Defence Force Discipline Act that allows it to turn around and prosecute offences that may occur overseas. And I think there is, there's a benefit in that. That would not occur in relation to civil courts.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
I also want to thank you and thank you. You've given us some, a lot to think about, the rational thoughts. The case studies are very helpful and we have been and will be looking at them closely. The suggestions you make in relation to a merits based system, which doesn't really exist at the moment. Are you aware of, have you or anybody else actually made those suggestions in any formal way to the ADF?
No, I haven't. I haven't. Although I've provided some material to some of my colleagues. I think I'm probably the first other than it was covered in the 2005 Senate Inquiry in a Military Justice. So it's not my own thought. It's been around for a long time.
Thank you. Just one other issue. With your broad experience in the legal world and in the military space, is there any other sphere that you're aware of where that sort of merits review process that you've suggested doesn't exist? Or is it exceptional in the ADF case?
Well, Commissioner Caldas, you would be aware of the capacity of the, in the New South Wales Police Force for the commissioner to terminate somebody because they've lost confidence. You have, of course, then, as I understand it, this to the Supreme Court. So it's not, it's not completely unique. But whether or not it is appropriate is another question.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr Fordham?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr Sheftour, any matters arising?
Nothing arising, Commissioners.
Okay. Mr Humphries, again, we just want to thank you for your evidence and your well thought through submission that you've made to us. And I understand you're excused from your summons to appear now. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll just have a short adjournment. Thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Morning, Mr Singleton.
Good morning, Commissioners. The witness in the witness box is the Reverend Dr Nicky Coleman. And this segment is to take evidence from her. Dr Coleman was a chaplain in the Royal Australian Air Force against whom various unacceptable behaviours were directed. They were the subject of a complaint. And, subject to corrections, the detail, but I think 10 out of 12 of the specific complaints against the person who inflicted the abuse were upheld. In this session, we won't be naming the person who inflicted the abuse. And we won't be naming a lot of other people because this is, this segment is primarily about the response to that abuse, how the allegations were managed and the impact on Dr Coleman of what happened to her, both the original abuse, but even more for our systemic purposes, the impact of the way it was managed or mismanaged thereafter. Obviously, I'll leave most of this to the evidence, but just to give the broadest possible outline. Dr Coleman originally made a complaint, as I said, of about 12 specific matters, of which 10 were upheld. At a later time, she made a complaint against a senior chaplain who had a supervisory role over both the abuser and Dr Coleman. She made a complaint about that supervisory senior chaplain, about the way he responded and dealt with the issues. Although that complaint did not lead to findings of unacceptable behaviour, it did lead to findings of poor leadership in a number of ways. She also then made further allegations against the original abuser, ones that had not been made in the first place because of the senior chaplain's misadvice. Those serious allegations was investigated by the Joint Military Police Unit, who reached the point of delivering a brief to the Office of the Director of Military Prosecutions. The matter did not proceed further than that for reasons that we will touch upon in the evidence. The rest of the story I'm going to lead to Dr Coleman as we go through. There is, however, some tendering to do. I will not be displaying the tender list because it itself, although redacted, has confidential material in it. And just for more abundant caution, in case there's a slip with the redaction process, I won't display it. However, I can tell you, Commissioners, that it comprises documents listed from 1 to 49, albeit at least one of those numbers, number 31, is just a blank entry. So it's actually 48 documents. Subject to a matter of parliamentary privilege that I'll mention in a moment, I tender item number one, the statement of Dr Coleman as a confidential exhibit. I tender item number two, which is a redacted statement omitting the names and certain other details as a public exhibit. And all the rest, I'm sorry, and I tender item number 49, which is a statement in response by Air Marshal Hupfeld, or Hupfeld, as a public exhibit. All the rest are confidential exhibits at this stage because there'll at least need to be a redaction process undertaken. So I tend to, now, I gave the qualification about parliamentary privileges. Certain passages have been redacted and they will not be tendered to you at all because of parliamentary privilege. The Commonwealth have made claims of parliamentary privilege which go beyond the redactions that those assisting you would make. But until that claim is resolved, I'd declined to tender any of the bits, the subject of my own redactions or the Commonwealth's. And they are recorded in correspondence, but involve the following paragraphs of the statement. 137, 162 through to 172, 173 and 185. So subject to those qualifications, I tendered the documents in the way just described.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. So they'll be accepted on that basis and admitted into evidence and allocated the next lot of numbers. And I understand the doctories represented today?
Yes.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, Dr Glenn Colomitz, K O L O.
Sorry, if you could just go to the speaker. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioners, Dr Glenn Colomitz, K O L O M E I T Z. I appear by leave for Reverend Dr Nicky Coleman.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I should just note that a number of people who are named in the evidence, although they won't be, have their names publicly exposed, were contacted, given certain opportunities to respond and they've taken the various positions that they have taken as recorded in the records of the commission. With your leave, I'll begin. Dr Coleman, could you please tell the Royal Commission your full name?
Sorry, I don't think she's been sworn in yet.
I, thank you. Let us swear you in. Thank you, associate.
Do you, Nicky Coleman, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Dr Coleman, have you made a statement dated the 23rd of August 2023 for the Royal Commission?
Yes, I have.
And to the best of your knowledge and ability, is it true and correct?
Yes.
Were you ordained as a uniting church minister in 1999?
Yes, I was.
And did you join the Royal Australian Air Force in 2017?
Yes, I did.
As a chaplain?
As a chaplain, yes.
And do you also have a PhD in military ethics?
That is correct.
And there's more to your career than that, even though I do not mention, is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you first just outline for the Royal Commission the motivation that you had in coming to the Royal Commission and ultimately choosing to give evidence?
So for probably the last decade, I've been talking about moral courage within the ADF and outside the ADF. And I didn't believe that I could preach moral courage without showing moral courage when it really counted. And I figured that this was actually the most important time for that. The two main reasons, though, that I wanted to come forward was firstly to assist the Commissioners because I think there's a deep need for systemic change within the ADF. And I was, because of my academic background, I feel that I have some things that I can add to the discussion of that. But also personally, I've not been able to tell my story. I've been ordered to not speak about my situation. And that also extends to my branch within the ADF. I left in March, so I apologize if I keep talking about they because I'm, or mine, but I'm not in the ADF anymore. But my branch has never been able to hear from me or anybody else that the complaints that I made were largely substantiated and that I was believed by two ADF investigations. So I'm here because I want systemic change, but a selfish part of me also wants the members of my branch to actually hear the truth.
You've heard me say that we're focusing on systemic issues, but to set the scene as briefly as we can and noting that there is more detail in the written statement. You have, have you not classified, I'll just take one step forward. When, in January 2019, you came to be a coworker in some way with another member of the ADF who is the person that I mentioned had abuse allegations sustained against him.
That is correct, yes.
And as a broad outline, in your statement, you've given four labels to just indicate the nature of what they are. Is this correct? They are physical and sexual assault, which we'll qualify in a moment.
Yes.
Threats of dismissal or disciplinary action for trivial mistakes or shortcomings. Thirdly, inappropriate and unfair work practices. And fourthly, bullying. Of course, they're general, but those are the four labels you've given.
They would be the four main areas, yes.
And just for completeness, you have in your statement noted that when you refer to sexual assault, you're actually referring to what the lawyers would call an indecent assault without consent.
That is correct, yes. I'm using the more broader, general term used in society rather than the more closer legal definition, that is correct.
Would you like, to the extent you wish to do so, do you want to tell the Royal Commissioners a little something about the impact that this conduct had on you as a person?
I am very resilient. I've worked in a male dominated area as a minister for 25 years. And this abuse had an impact on me unlike any other workplace I've ever had before. Partly the abuse, but also I was begging for help and asking for it to stop from my senior leaders and it just wasn't happening. One person did intervene and it actually got worse. I was in a difficult situation. My husband was very sick and so I was really sustaining us financially and looking after us. And so I didn't have any alternative to go elsewhere. The abuse itself has had a profound impact on my mental health and my physical health. And I've been really resilient throughout all my life. And I think everybody has their breaking point and unfortunately I found mine.
You've indicated in your statement that you believe that what was done to you by the person who was abusing you was a symptom of broader issues, particularly with respect to women and the LGBTQIQ chaplains. Is there anything that you would wish to elaborate for the Royal Commissioners in that regard? That systemic problem?
So until very recently, the branch that I belonged to, the chaplaincy branch, was very dysfunctional and had quite a toxic culture and impacted on a very large group of people, but particularly the women and the LGBTQIQ chaplains. And that was evidenced by there being an inquiry into the branch, which was called the Air Force Chaplaincy Review, which also found those things. They made some recommendations and long, long overdue, but those recommendations upheld my concerns about the branch. but those recommendations upheld my concerns about the branch.
You did raise the abuse that was being directed toward you with the senior chaplain. What was his response to you? And I'm talking at this earlier stage while it was still happening before you've made a complaint. What did he do, if anything, to help you?
Yep.
Or what advice did he give you and so on?
So, the abuse started in January and I raised it with him in March. And his advice at that point was to manage it myself and to, because complaints of this nature need to be managed at the lowest level. At that point, I was being assaulted and sexually harassed, plus everything else, bullying. He gave me some suggestions about how to manage my abuser, but at no point did he ever talk about intervening and at no point did I see any intervention or counselling or supervision of my abuser that would have changed the situation. So I met with him fairly regularly because we're both co-located in Canberra and he had many, many, many opportunities to stop the abuse and he chose not to.
Dr Coleman, if you need a break, we're, a five-minute break.
Thank you, but I'd rather just keep going if that's okay. Thank you, but thank you for offering.
Thank you.
Commissioners, now that the feed has been restored, I'll just remind the public that during the evidence, we will be referring to a senior chaplain who was one of a plurality of chaplains more senior than this witness. We will use the phrase the senior chaplain, but when we do so, it's because we're referring to a senior chaplain within this witness had certain engagements. And people should not draw an inference as to which of the more senior chaplains it is. I think, Dr Coleman, we were at the point of ascertaining from you the nature of the communications that this senior chaplain made to you about the possibility that you might make a complaint about your work colleague who'd been abusing you.
So, pardon me, so when it came time to making, when I was thinking about making a complaint, a senior chaplain, I would say, directed me to think very clearly about whether I wanted to make a complaint, encouraged me to not make a complaint outside of the branch for a whole heap of reasons, and also directed me to not include the more serious allegations because it would have a negative impact on my abuser and on their family.
And you, of those reasons, this is not a memory test today.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm going to remind you of objections. One was, and I'll be paraphrasing from your statement, but one was that it would be unfair to cast aspersions on an innocent man such as your abuser.
That would be a direct quote that was said to me, that is correct, yes.
Another you somewhat touched upon was that chaplains were expected to deal with complaints in-house rather than taking them outside the branch. And he also cited a verse from the Bible, Matthew chapter eighteen, verses fifteen to seventeen.
That is correct.
The, you started working alongside or nearby your abuser in early twenty nineteen.
That is correct.
Ultimately, you did make a complaint. When did you make the complaint?
So I started thinking more seriously about making a complaint after I was out of that workplace in twenty twenty. I didn't, but I took a number of months to write my complaint because I wanted it to be as thorough as possible. And it's quite a difficult process writing a U B complaint. And so I think I didn't officially put in the complaint until August twenty twenty.
All right, now in December twenty nineteen.
Yes.
Firstly, did you go and see a psychologist?
Yes, towards the end of my year, it was increasingly having a negative impact on me. I went and saw a psychologist at my local Defence Health Centre who advised me to... who advised me to stay away from my abuser because it's having such a negative impact on me. I then went to a senior chaplain who advised me to go and be in a different workplace, which I did.
And when you say a senior chaplain, is that the same senior?
Same person, yes.
Referred to Matthew 18.
The one that we're doing mental gymnastics to avoid identifying, that is correct.
So on this occasion, he did facilitate or allow you to go to another?
Yes, he did, yes.
We won't have time, unfortunately, to do every detail, but there's a brief piece of context. Is it the case that another person was making a complaint against the person who was abusing you?
That is correct.
And you were interviewed in the course of that investigation?
Yes, I was interviewed in the case of another investigation into my abuser that I didn't put forward. It was put forward by someone else.
In the course of your interview, you made a reference to not letting the other complainant be left in a room alone with your abuser. Did that lead to some action?
Yes, after that investigation was concluded, I was contacted by the decision maker in that particular investigation, who said that they couldn't ignore that statement that I had made and that she, I hope it's okay to say she, would either put in a command initiated complaint, or if I wished, I could put in a complaint. Another senior chaplain also offered to put in a complaint on my behalf. So but in the end, I decided that I would take the moral courage to put the complaint in myself.
And you've mentioned it took a couple of months to write, and it was lodged in August 2020?
That is correct.
Just tell us about the why it took a couple of months to write, whether it was an easy or a difficult process. Tell us about actually writing and lodging a complaint.
So I've been a chaplain supporting a lot of other people who have been either complainants or respondents in the unacceptable behaviour complaints process. And my learning from that was that the writing of the complaint is actually really important. It's, we are encouraged to just tell the story, but that doesn't actually help the fact finder. They really need to ensure when you're writing a complaint that it lines up very closely with the Complaints Resolution Manual that Defence has produced, to make it as easy as possible for the fact finder to, to work on the facts rather than having to determine which part of unacceptable behaviour it comes under. So I'm not a lawyer, but I work with a lot of legal documents, so I took a lot of time to very carefully ensure that my complaint listed very carefully how it related to the Complaints Resolution Manual. And it was exceedingly difficult to write. I was given some assistance from a workplace behaviour advisor at Glenbrook, who was fantastic. She helped me take any kind of emotion out of the complaint, and I was really grateful for her help. But generally, I wrote the whole thing myself.
Did your complaint include all of the things that had been done to you?
Absolutely not.
Why not? Why did you leave some things out?
So I was directed by a senior chaplain that I couldn't include anything in that complaint that I didn't have eyewitness or written evidence for, or photographic evidence for. I was really lucky that I had some photographic evidence. I was really lucky that I had witness evidence and some written evidence. So I included only those things that I had actual hard evidence for because I was directed to not include anything that didn't have hard evidence.
Is the case, is it not, that meanwhile, you got a little bit of advice from an officer in Air Force Headquarters? Well, that's a.
Nice ringtone.
That's me. I can't even work out how to turn it off.
Is there something big coming out?
It was a very important news bulletin, but not important enough to take the call, and I apologize, Commissioners, I apologize, Dr Coleman.
That's okay.
It's, you know, just one of those low points of a legal career.
If that's all it is, it's okay.
You got a little advice about a certain bit of training that you might do from, from an officer in Headquarters?
So when I was originally talking to a senior officer in Air Force Headquarters, I don't think they fully understood how serious the unacceptable behaviour and worse was. And they encouraged me, instead of putting in an unacceptable behaviour complaint, to do difficult conversations in the workplace online training, which, you know, as a chaplain, I already know how to do, so that I could handle it at the lowest level by dealing with it myself.
In fact, you did put in a complaint. Did that same person who had recommended difficult conversations training then have a role in respect of the complaint process? And if so, what?
So this person was then appointed, I guess is the right word, to check in on me. And I was grateful for them checking in, but it wasn't somebody who had pastoral care training. So when she was checking in on me, it was, "How you good? How you going?" And if I said, "I'm not going okay", she kind of didn't know how to deal with that. And that's not her fault. She lacked the experience and the training.
Now, you got some support from Army Chaplaincy. Could you just give us an overview of the contrast between that support and the way you were treated by Air Force Chaplaincy?
So because of my role as the senior chaplain ethicist in the Air Force, I was often lent out to Army, Navy and Air Force, not only Chaplaincy but all, many branches. So I had worked quite closely with both Army and Navy Chaplaincy of all ranks. And Army Chaplaincy, without me even asking, just wrapped me up in support from the most senior chaplain all the way down to the local support chaplain in Canberra, who, they provided me just very naturally a lot of support. There's even an Army, retired Army chaplain here today, supporting my family. The contrast with Air Force was that I was just cast aside. I was uninvited from Chaplaincy events that I would normally be be attending, so that my abuser could attend. I was ostracised. I had falsehoods spread about me by a senior chaplain. It was, unlike any other workplace I've ever been in, it was horrendous. And I'm exceedingly grateful for the pastoral care provided by the Army Chaplaincy branch, or I don't think I'd be alive.
The complaint got an outcome in 2020?
Yes.
And as you put in your statement, ten out of, ten of the allegations were substantiated? And you were given a minute that confirmed in writing that that was the case, is that correct? But did you get any information about what would then happen?
So two things, two answers to that. One is, in the minute, it tells you that you can be given the report from the fact finder redacted. And that took months, maybe seven months to reach me. Separate to that, my very kind CO arranged for a legal officer to sit down and explain to me what the process would be going forward in regards to, not me, but how Air Force, very generally, so it wasn't about specifically about my abuser, but how Air Force generally handles things after a UB, a serious UB complaint is substantiated. And I appreciated that legal officer giving me her time for that.
Accepting that you appreciated what was thus afforded to you, were you actually told at that point, or ever officially, what action would be taken in respect of the abuser on account of the substantiated complaints?
No, I'm not allowed to know that. Air Force has never officially told me. I verbally objected to that and was told that the Air Force has a different interpretation of the Privacy Act and that I couldn't be told the outcomes for my abuser, that that would be a breach of the Privacy Act, and so I wasn't able to be told ever. And I never have been officially told.
And could you give the Commissioners a sense of how important it would or wouldn't be to to you as the victim of abuse, and therefore potentially many others in your position? Is it important to know what's going to be done, what the full outcome is going to be or not?
So the thing for me was, I can't judge how seriously my complaint was taken if I don't know what the outcomes are. And more broadly, systemically, it not being transparent about outcomes for substantiated serious UB encourages the hiding of it. So it means that people can tell lies about what the outcome was, and that actually happened in my case. And I'm ordered to not talk about it, so I can't counter that. So that means that the perception within my branch and more widely, they don't know how seriously these situations have been taken and what action Defence has taken. It is a perfect storm of factors to enable covering up of abuse.
We will come to some of the details of that, but I just want to introduce another thread.
Yep.
The issue, your denomination, the Uniting Church, imposed upon you, correct me if I'm wrong about this, or if I get the language wrong, but imposed upon you certain ethical type duties to report what your abuser had done. Could you outline what the ethical duty on you was?
So the Uniting Church has done this for a very long time, but post Royal Commission interinstitutional responses to child sexual abuse, it's a requirement, my understanding, of all ministers in Australia to report serious concerns they have about the suitability for ministry for people, whether they're chaplains, whether they're pastors, or whether they're priests and ministers. And so I had, I had a duty to report my concerns about the suitability of my abuser based on the substantiated complaints that I had raised against him.
Your abuser was from a different denomination?
A different denomination, that is correct.
To whom did you have the ethical duty to make a report about his conduct?
I believe society, but to his denomination, I believe, because we need to protect the people that he is now ministering to, and they can't make a decision about that if they don't have all of the facts. I repeatedly requested our senior chaplain and Air Force to formally advise them, but that didn't happen.
Now, the senior chaplain whom you urged to advise the abuser's church, did he have the same denomination as the abuser?
That is correct.
And they had a connection, without going into details right now, but they had a connection other than being co-workers in the ADF?
I don't know how to answer that. I mean, I can answer that, but I don't know how to answer that with the Commonwealth's concerns about privacy. But yes, is the answer. Yes. Many, many contexts, not just one or two, I would say four or five.
There was, the, their, their church through its relevant body did an investigation, is that right?
So I made a complaint to the Professional Standards Unit of the denomination of my abuser. And because the Air Force had not given them, and because I'd senior chaplain had not given them an official notification, they had to then have another investigation. Yes, that answers, I think.
And did you ever learn the outcome of that investigation?
Yes, I did.
Officially?
Yes, officially, through the church Professional Standards Unit and through the head of that denomination in New South Wales ACT.
And perhaps to belabor the point, but just make sure it's clear in everyone's mind what the Air Force felt it couldn't or would not do, tell you the outcome. Is there a proper comparison between the Air Force and this other church or this denomination?
It's a shock to me that a church can handle sexual abuse claims better than the Air Force. So yes, they did tell me the outcomes. And in fact, recently, that denomination wrote to the Air Force and requested that all chaplains be advised of the outcome of their investigation. So my branch has been advised of the outcomes of the church's investigation, but not the Air Force investigation.
Coming back to your workplace in the ADF, I just want to look at a few aspects. After the complaint was substantiated against your abuser, did you continue to work in proximity with him, or was there separation?
Am I allowed to talk about locations?
Yes, and in broad terms?
In broad terms. So yes.
Like Russell Office Complex, for example?
Russell Office Complex. So I was at that time working with the Space Domain Review Team in R1, which is a building within the Russell complex, and my abuser was working in another building within that complex. And I ran into him in various different locations, which I found very distressing. So this is after, so I was effectively forced to keep working in a reasonably close proximity to my abuser after he had been found to have unacceptable behaviour substantiated against him by me.
And you had, you ran into him in the sense of encountering him in that workplace. Just to get a little bit of context, is the Russell Office Complex a series of discreet buildings all closely?
Yes, there are eight buildings.
And there, sorry, did you just give the number of buildings?
Eight.
Yes. After encountering him, was some decision made to prevent such encounters occurring?
So I was limited to R1, and my abuser was allowed to go into every other building, R2 to R8, except on a Monday, I think. I was to work elsewhere so that my abuser could meet with both of our CEOs. I actually happened to work on the same floor as my CEO, our shared CEO, so that he could have those regular weekly meetings that are normal for that position. But I was to work elsewhere. But the rest of the time, I was confined to R1, and my abuser was working between R2 and, able to go into buildings R2 to R8.
Does one of these eight buildings have a cafe, which is, if you will, the biggest or the largest cafe? Where's that?
So the large cafe is in R2, and that's where you are able to get lunch, for example.
And is that where socialising?
Oh, yes. But I was not allowed to go there.
So you're prohibited from going to the cafe. What impact did that have on your ability to connect at lunchtime with various other co-workers?
So the co-workers in my team, in the Space Domain Review Team, one day invited me to go and have lunch with them in the R2 cafe. And I had to tell them I wasn't allowed in that building, which I found really humiliating. I couldn't tell them why, because I'd been told to not disclose the outcomes of the unacceptable behaviour. So it was quite difficult for me.
I just want to turn to another aspect of your work, individual welfare board meetings?
Yes.
You had some?
So as a chaplain, I attended many, many IWB's, but as a part of my handling of my case, there were quite a few individual welfare board meetings for my particular case.
You were the individual?
I was the individual, yes. It was an unusual, new situation for me.
Give as much details as you wish, but my actual question is, just give us your overview assessment of whether that was a good process for you?
So for me, it was actually a really great process, and I suspect that's because a lot of the people that were in the IWB's were people that I had previously worked with, assisting other people going through the IWB's. So the CO was there. My Army support person was there. Sometimes my technical command was there within Air Force Chaplaincy. The medical doctor was there. Sometimes the psychologist was there. Occasionally. Occasionally, as I got sick, either my husband or my daughter assisted with being my support person there as well.
I want to take you to the last day that you regularly worked at the office complex, the Russell Office Complex, and I'll attempt to summarise it, but you correct me if I've got it wrong.
Yep.
You, it appears that you received an email from another female chaplain advising you that she'd received an S M S from a commanding officer to warn that your abuser would be on the same floor in the same building as you were.
That is correct.
It turns out to be a bit of a mishap in that the commanding officer had sent the S M S to the wrong person. Is that right?
That is correct. It was a complete accident with no malice.
No malice, but what does it tell you that this mistake could occur?
The fact that there were multiple complaints against my abuser by female chaplains, and that it was difficult for the C O to keep straight who she needed to keep away from the abuser, I think actually speaks volumes.
Now, what was the impact? You got the information that he was coming, whether it was a mistake or not.
Yeah.
Got the information, what happened?
So I got the information and I was trapped at my desk because I didn't know when my abuser was going to be coming into the building or not. And it basically gave me really bad digestive issues, and I eventually had to go to the bathroom fearful of running into my abuser and had a gastrointestinal explosion. I then went back to my desk, sat there for about 10 minutes and thought, I can't be here. I was trembling. I was really upset. So I actually went over to the Duntrun Health Centre and went into the walk-in psych clinic and saw the psych who sent me home. Insisted on me not driving myself home, but actually came and collected me and drove me home to make sure that I got home safely.
And did you return to work at the Russell Office Complex on a regular basis?
That was basically the last day that I worked in the Russell Office Complexes or in Space Command. I did eventually return to work at the Defence Force Chaplains College, but that was basically my last day working at the high standard that I normally do.
Want to turn to, you've mentioned the support you had from Army Chaplaincy. I just want to give you an opportunity, if you wish, to comment on a couple of other parts of the A D F as they may have touched upon you, the Centre for Defence Leadership and Ethics.
So there were a number of organisations who hid me from Chaplaincy effectively and looked after me. So that was the Centre for Defence Leadership and Ethics, who I'd done some work with as a military ethicist. The Defence Space Domain Review, which then became Space Command, H Q Jock, and the Defence Force Chaplains College. So they all took me in and looked after me because I wasn't able or welcome to go back to Air Force Chaplaincy Branch.
All right, I want to go back, just pick up a loose end. You referred to being uninvited to a variety of events. And you've given some description of that. Was that sometimes documented? Was it always a phone call? How did you get uninvited?
So the main one that you're referring to was via email. So I received an email from a senior chaplain uninviting me from a Canberra Tri-Service Chaplaincy Event and advising me that even, that I was uninvited, but that I could still attend if I wanted to, but that my abuser had already R S V P'd, yes. So because he had already R S V P'd, yes, that was why I had been uninvited, to conflict having us in the same location.
I want to go to a different.
Just like to say, this was after he was found guilty of unacceptable behaviour, and also after this particular senior chaplain had commented that he had not received the minute, the outcomes from the unacceptable behaviour complaint. And so I sought permission and was granted permission to give him a copy of that minute, and I personally emailed it to him, so he had the outcomes. And in a few weeks after that, that's when he chose to uninvite me so that my abuser could attend.
I want to go to a different email of the 9th of April 2021.
Yep.
I'm going to read some parts, and I'll just get you to comment on the significance of those parts of the email, if you're willing and able to continue with it. The senior chaplain wrote to a large number of chaplains, but not you.
Every single currently serving permanent Air Force and Reserve Chaplain except me.
And after an introductory sentence, this was stated, "Many of you will be aware that Chaplaincy in the Canberra area has been travelling an uneasy road this past 12 months." What's the message in context? Would people receiving that sentence have any understanding what the uneasy road was?
So it instantly identifies me as being the other person, the problem. Interesting that the Commonwealth cares about the privacy of my, this particular person writing the email, but that that privacy was not afforded to me in this email.
Just to, we'll get to it, and I'll read out the relevant.
Please go.
Effectively, this was, was it not, an email informing the chaplains that the person who had abused you was moving on, in ways we'll come to?
Yes, that is correct.
And that the beginning of the description of the moving on and what's happening was a greeting, but then what I read out. And then it says, "Due to the nature of the issues, I am not at liberty to share the specifics. I am able to share that during this period, your abuser has been seeking ministry outside the permanent Air Force, and as of the end of March, has been invited to minister in a local congregation near to his family. After much prayer, he has accepted this senior minister role." From the end of April, early May, this decision by the person has not been made lightly, and the person has faithfully served for the past, and the number of years is stated. I'm sorry, I actually missed a line because it's rather small font. I'll just read it again. This decision by the person has not been made lightly, and the decision to transfer was his and not the result of administrative action. And then what I said before, he's faithfully served for a past number of years. So you got this email from one of the original recipients who
That is correct.
checked in to see whether you were okay, in whatever order and to the extent you wish. What was the impact on you of learning that this email had been sent to all your colleagues? And what message did it convey to them about you and the situation?
The person who forwarded me the email was checking in because they were concerned that, concerned for my welfare, because I was readily identified in this email, and concerned because they knew the outcome of the unacceptable behaviour complaint, but was surprised to see that the Air Force had not taken further action against my abuser. I personally found the email exceedingly distressing because it identifies me as the problem rather than my abuser, but also it, because of the way that it was phrased and the way that the branch hadn't been told the unacceptable behaviour outcome. So I felt that it was naming me as a liar, that my unacceptable behaviour complaint hadn't been upheld because of the way it was phrased, and it had an enormous impact on me. I would say that my abuse had an impact on me, but this email had a more significant impact, to the point where, I can't remember if it was the day after or two days after, my family actually took me to hospital for suicidal ideation because they didn't feel that they could keep me safe anymore.
You were then on sick leave because of that circumstance for some time? When you were in the hospital, or maybe when you were at home, did you receive any communications from Army or from Army Chaplaincy or Navy?
Army and Navy Chaplaincy, both their senior leadership and Army members in Canberra, and more widely, and Navy as well, were really lovely. They reached out to make sure that I was okay. They sent me chocolates, flowers, I mean, really good chocolates. Flowers, I received cards from them, small gifts. A really lovely Army chaplain sent me a swearing colouring in book, which I thought was lovely, with the really rude words pulled out, which I thought was great, but they provided me with a lot of support.
Sorry, could I just, you may have said this and I may not have heard it, but was it the Army or the Navy that had the better chocolates?
Navy, actually, gave me cocoa black chocolates.
After you were discharged from hospital, did you do something with the email that had been forwarded to you from which I've read?
So after I was discharged from hospital, the head of the Space Domain Review Team was aware of my unacceptable. I'm a big fan of transparency and not having any surprises for command, so I had actually been very upfront with him about the problems I'd had in Chaplaincy. He had offered repeatedly to put in a command-initiated unacceptable behaviour complaint against a senior chaplain on my behalf, with all of the uninviting stuff. And I had asked him not to, but after the email, I didn't feel that I had, I could hold it back any further. So I actually emailed, forwarded the email to the head of the Space Domain Review Team, an air commodore, and he began, passed on to the appropriate people my complaint, my concerns, so that an unacceptable behaviour complaint could be raised in regards to that email.
Did you put, sorry, did that complaint involve more than just the narrow content of that email?
So I decided that it wasn't, I decided that I would put in everything, that the email was a symptom of a much wider, bigger problem within Chaplaincy as a result of a toxic culture under the leadership of this person, and that it involved a wide variety of unacceptable behaviour, including discrimination and so on. And so I took the time once again to write a detailed unacceptable behaviour complaint, and it was quite wide-ranging.
Now, that was occurring in April 2021, according to your statement, and by reference to the email of the 9th of April. Do you recall when the complaint was, reached this resolution in the sense that you got a minute outlining what had been found?
I can't remember exactly, but I'm pretty certain it was the following year.
According to your statement, and there's a lot of documentation, it was the 1st of March.
2022.
You make the point that insofar as it was a complaint that the senior chaplain's conduct was unacceptable behaviour, that label was not substantiated. But you also make the point that the person had been found to have demonstrated poor leadership.
So my complaint against this senior leader was not substantiated, and the findings and the outcomes in the minute identified poor leadership rather than unacceptable behaviour.
I want to suggest to you that there were some very stringent criticisms of the person's leadership. Would you cavil with that brief description?
Absolutely.
You disagree with it?
Oh, no, I agree that there were problems with the leadership, but I was more concerned that my complaint, I don't believe, was investigated appropriately.
Yes, so I wanted to, you've given some examples. Perhaps you could just give the Commissioners a brief indication, we won't go through the whole statement, but of what you felt was inadequate about the investigation?
So many things. Firstly, secondly, the, some of the events that I requested be investigated, they investigated the wrong dates, so they couldn't have actually investigated the events that I was talking about. One of the reasons given for why this particular senior chaplain was not found to have substantiated U B was because I didn't understand how the chain of command and the technical command in Air Force Chaplaincy Branch works, except that the senior chaplain was my direct daily supervisor, and I have that in writing in a minute, signed by this senior chaplain. But all of that was ignored.
I'm sorry, I have to object to that because that is an identifier.
I think the proper course is that that detail of direct supervision not be published.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So I was really unhappy. There was a lot of work went into the investigation, and I have no idea how they came up with the outcomes that they did based on that investigation. Yeah.
Do you have any comment on how long it took? April through to the 1st of March, according to the paperwork, to do this investigation and get you a minute of outcome? You don't have to have a comment on it, but is there anything you wanted to say about the effect on you and how you were travelling in that period?
So, I mean, it had a significant impact on me. Partly, the part of the delay was that I took a while to write my complaint, but then it took many nine months to actually investigate. It had a significant impact because I'd been ostracised from my branch for taking complaints outside of the branch, and this just delayed that even further.
Come back to a little thread that was hanging loose from several minutes ago. You got minutes of outcome of both of your complaints.
Yes.
But you said earlier in respect of the first complaint against your abuser, you were told you had some right to a redacted report from the Fact Finder, and you sought it.
That is correct.
Just, did you get it straight away at a later time?
So I started requesting it via email in November, and I finally received it maybe in May. Oh, my husband's saying later. Honestly, I can't remember. It was so, it took an enormous amount of time. But there were many excuses. It was somebody's on holiday, somebody's busy, somebody's sick.
It's not necessary to pretend that you have to remember all the dates. I'll remind you that there's a document called Record of Conversation dated the 2nd of June.
So it was after that for sure, because I believed that I was getting the Fact Finder's report on that day.
Now, let's go to that. The story, I think, for that day or leading up to that day begins with a phone call inviting you to come.
Yes, that is correct.
Tell us what that phone call was about.
So that would have been from my commanding officer, inviting me to come into a meeting in the Russell Offices in order to receive the fact-finding report into my initial unacceptable behaviour complaint into my abuser. in order to receive the fact finding report into my initial unacceptable behaviour complaint into my abuser that I'd been requesting since November.
And did you go?
I did, and I took my my husband as my support person.
And what happened when you got there?
Um, so it was uh the commanding officer, myself, my husband and um my supervisor within Space Command in the room. And when I walked in, I was surprised that it wasn't actually a meeting about giving me the fact find report from my initial unacceptable behaviour complaint, but actually a record of conversation. Um.
Just for the uninitiated, that's a capital R and a capital C record of conversation?
Capital R, capital O, capital C. It's commonly called ROC in um defence.
Just tell us in, for we laypeople, just what is a record of conversation and what does it signify in this defence context?
So a record of conversation is usually the lowest level disciplinary process that defence uses. In theory, it's used to um tell somebody what they're doing wrong and encourage them in how they can actually improve. But in reality, mostly it's used to um tell you what you've done wrong and these will be the outcomes. Um, and it's usually scripted, so when you go in, um, the CO will actually read what is on. So in theory, a record of conversation is a form that records the conversation you have had. But in reality, it's a script given, usually I assume through conversations with legal, um, a script for the whoever is doing the ROC to read to you. And then you are invited to sign that then or later on um, in the close proximity to that moment um, to affirm that that's actually what was said. So that's my experience of ROCs as a chaplain going as a support person and me personally.
We do have both the record of the conversation, the actual document. And we also have your statement, which provides additional detail. However, just so that we can keep the flow here, could you just give us a summary of the basic thrust, the basic point, the basic issue that was raised when the script was read to you?
Yep, so I thought that I was going in to get the fact finding report. What actually was happening was that I went in to be effectively disciplined. Um, I was told that this was not administrative action but a formal counselling session because I had breached the privacy of my abuser by reporting him to the professional standards unit of his church.
Um. Um, was there a change in demeanor or mood or something along those lines? I don't want to put too many words in your mouth during the meeting.
So I'm not going to name the denomination because I think that would be unfair. But um, this particular denomination's professional standards unit has a name that they use that is not related to the name of the church. And the CO kept referring to this particular acronym. And my husband, Associate Professor of Ethics and Leadership at Adfa, Stephen Coleman.
And you're just, he's here supporting you?
Is supporting me at the moment, commented to the CO um, and said, you keep referring to this particular name. You do know that is the professional standards unit of this particular denomination. And the blood just drained out of my CO's face. I don't think she was aware. I think that whoever had done an investigation had assumed that I'd just spread gossip to a local church rather than and and that was what this was based on, rather than actually putting in a complaint to the professional standards unit of this particular denomination.
And we'll go to the documents for detail, but you were given directions about whom you could tell about what had happened and the outcomes and whom you couldn't tell and what you could and could not do with documents.
That is correct.
Um. Later, um, in light of that direction, did you request permission to speak with a number of people, including the Minister for Defence?
So I requested permission, I was directed in that ROC to not talk about any information that was owned by defence. And I was also directed to not talk about any information that related to a third party. Um, I then sought later on, sought clarification and requested permission to speak to the minister, the shadow minister, my local member, um, IG ADF, uh, Human Rights Commission, the um Defence Ombudsman and the Royal Commission.
And partly due to time constraints, but is it the case that correspondence was written to ministers? And after some delay, replies were received?
I didn't write to the ministers, my husband did.
Yes.
Responses were received.
When was the most recent response received?
Last week, maybe the week before, two weeks ago, after a ten month delay.
All right, and we'll have to move on and just read those. But I, there's yet another loose end to go to. Your complaint against your abuser dealt with twelve, made twelve allegations, tens of substantiated. But as you've testified already, some of the more serious matters were not included because of advice given. I now want to turn to those more serious matters, a, an indecent assault, threats to kill in an ordinary assault. Um, did you eventually make those the subject of a complaint that was investigated?
So my CO very kindly said that she couldn't sit on those any longer and actually she referred them to the Joint Military Police Unit in Canberra. And I was really grateful that she did that.
Um, do you have any general reflections on the Joint Military Police Unit's investigation of the matter?
I was actually really impressed. They had an exceedingly well thought out, trauma informed approach. They had me meet with a social worker, the investigators came to my house in plain clothes. They were kind but vigorous in their investigation. And I was actually exceedingly impressed with what the job that they did. They did a great job.
The result of the investigation was that a brief of evidence was sent to the Office of the Director of Military Prosecutions. With the ball in that court, what was the outcome of that officer's deliberations insofar as it was communicated to you?
So I was advised in November of twenty twenty two that verb, um, on the phone, that it would not go for prosecution for two reasons. I eventually got a written response.
We'll come to that, but on the phone.
On the phone, I was told.
With which type of person?
So it was not the person who I, who I had, um, who had investigated my case, but another JPMU person who needed to urgently tell me that the Office of the Director of Military Prosecutions had decided not to prosecute for two reasons. One, because it was too serious and needed to go to the magistrate's court in the ACT. And two, because it wasn't in the interests of good order and discipline to prosecute somebody who was leaving defence.
Did you, right, could you just elaborate on that second reason? If you, do you now have a, a better understanding of what that means? And maybe you understood it then, but what does it mean to say it's not in the best interest of the military to prosecute someone who's leaving? In this case, what was, what did that really refer to?
Well, the thing for me was that I believed that my abuser was leaving to avoid prosecution. So it's a circular argument. Also, what message does it send about how seriously defence takes sexual assault? If they allow a chaplain to leave whilst still having very serious potential charges against them? How is that in the order of good order and discipline within defence? So.
Was it your understanding that even if this person had left, the door would still have been open for a prosecution, at least for a while?
So I'm not a lawyer, but my experience with recently transitioned members is that you are able to be charged under the Defence Force Discipline Act for six months after they leave. My concern also about my abuser leaving was that they would have needed to have permission from CDF to leave because they were cutting short their compulsory reserve service. So many hands touched this decision. And I'm exceedingly disappointed in the senior leadership of the ADF for making that decision. Yep.
What, I just need to, I'd like to turn to a couple of other matters. Briefly, you had engagement with Sempro. Could you just give us a brief summary of what happened and your, what do you think of the experience?
So I contacted Sempro on the phone and they're actually very understanding on the phone and very supportive. I then requested through my I W B that Sempro be involved in reintegrating me back into the chaplaincy branch. Even though I had been ostracised by the branch, I genuinely care about my work colleagues and I love my job. And I wanted to go back into working as a chaplain. Um, Sempro unfortunately don't have policies and processes in how to reintegrate a sexual harassment and a sexual assault complainant back into the workforce, which really surprised me because whether by accident or design, they appear to have been set up to fail because they don't have those processes to enable victims to go back to work. It seems that it's built into the system that victims are expected to just quietly leave rather than reintegrate back into teams. And I think that that significant, that significant oversight is a huge problem for Sempro's capability of what they do.
Now, that topic of them not having a policy or a process, did that actually come up in your discussions with them in some?
Yes, they suggested I write it.
I'm in a position.
I wasn't really in the right headspace to do that.
Um, did you have engagement with another official or organisation, the IG ADF, Inspector General of the ADF?
I actually didn't engage with the IG ADF. I have been their chaplain and gone and visited them and they are wonderful people who do hard work and I think are people of integrity. However, as a chaplain, I have also been support person and friends with others who have gone with their concerns to IG ADF and they've been fobbed off. One particular case, the person then complained direct to CDF, who directed an investigation happen, and a thorough investigation occurred. So my concern, my understanding of IG ADF is that firstly, they're not sufficiently external because they're uniformed members. And secondly, it shouldn't make any difference what, who it is that is bringing serious concerns to them. They should all be investigated. It shouldn't matter whether you're a private or a CDF, they should do the same job. They can't be seen as independent if they can be directed by the CDF to do a more thorough job.
I appreciate you can't speak for every member of the ADF and you may not reflect the views of people in Darwin or Townsville or Perth. But to the extent that you can from your time in the ADF, can you comment on to what extent your perception of the IG ADF may be held by others?
My understanding from being a chaplain supporting other people is that the IG ADF is not seen as external to defence. Yeah.
Can I just ask you about the Defence Ombudsman, another possible place to go? Did you go there?
I did not go to the Defence Ombudsman because at the time on their website, it said that they don't look at um abuse complaints after, I think it was twenty fourteen, because apparently it doesn't happen in defence anymore. Um, I don't understand why they have that particular delineation. I assume that's because of inquiry, previous inquiries. So they've since taken that off their website. It was right in the middle of the beginning of their, their website. Um, so I, I didn't have any faith in going to talk to them because I'm not somebody from the nineteen seventies. I'm somebody talking about complaints for things that happened in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Um, there are documents, but I did want to give you the opportunity to reflect on the fact that an inquiry, officer inquiry was commenced into the Air Force Chaplaincy Branch. Did you have any comments that you wanted to share with the commissioners about that? We will be able to read documents about it, but what's your perspective on that?
So the inquiry officer inquiry into the Air Force Chaplaincy Branch was called the Air Force Chaplaincy Review. And it had a wide range of um, uh, terms of reference. Particularly, it looked at women chaplains and LGBTI chaplains, but also the suitability of chaplaincy to provide support to the wider air force. They made a hundred and seventy six findings that no one outside of the very, very senior leadership in the Air Force Chaplaincy know about. So I don't know what those recommendations are, even though my case was one of the trigger cases to make that inquiry happen. There were sixty two recommendations of which sixty one have happened or have been accepted and are being implemented. Um, I'm really proud of the fact that me speaking up brought about that inquiry and that it has enabled women chaplains to now be allowed to be promoted to senior leadership positions in Air Force Chaplaincy, which sounds absurd that I have to say it out loud in twenty twenty three, but that wasn't allowed to happen previously. But I have concerns about the inquiry officer inquiry because there were a large number of chaplains, including myself, who brought forward very serious unacceptable behaviour evidence and evidence of illegal activity to the inquiry officer inquiry, and none of that has been forwarded for further investigation. So how seriously can Air Force be taking cultural change if they're not even referring evidence that we are giving them? One of the findings, sorry, one of the recommendations from the inquiry officer inquiry was that the chaplaincy branch would now be subject to the usual processes of unacceptable behaviour complaints in um, in the Air Force Chaplaincy Branch and wider. But the inquiry itself did not follow defence processes in regards to unacceptable behaviour by not referring on those particular allegations about unacceptable, serious unacceptable behaviour and illegal activity. So how seriously can we take their claim for cultural change if they're not even applying what we have been told to apply? So I am exceedingly excited about the changes that have come about because it has enabled some amazing people to do some great things. But I have serious concerns about whether Air Force is actually um, taking seriously cultural change.
The it'll be time for me to allow others an opportunity to ask you some questions. But you'd like to finish, I believe, by reading paragraph one hundred and ninety six of your statement, which is not said by anyone to require any redaction. And you had a few introductory remarks.
I have a few introductory remarks which are a bit more positive than that statement. So by naming the problem the ADF has with unacceptable behaviour complaints or unacceptable behaviour, especially bullying, and also the problem with sexual assaults and fixing the way these are handled, it would have a dramatic positive impact on the reputation of the ADF. As well as helping with retention, recruitment and ensuring the capability of the ATF to protect Australia. I truly want our leaders to show moral courage and do the right thing. But if that doesn't help them, I'd like them to do it so that the capability of the ADF is not undermined by the dirty little secret that bullying and sexual assaults are rife and they're not dealing with them adequately. In fact, they're spending more time covering them up than preventing them. I'd like to finish by saying that the current senior leadership of the Air Force are cowards. You demand coverage of everyone who serves under you through the ADF value statements, but you lack the moral courage to stand up to the bullies, the abusers and the sexual perverts who prey on the men and women who've signed up to protect their country and serve under you. You are cowards because you don't, you know the scope of the problem, but instead of doing something about it at a defence wide level or even at an individual case level when you have the opportunity, instead you look the other way, effectively protecting the abusers by allowing them to continue. the abusers by allowing them to continue to serve. You lie when you say you take unacceptable behaviour and more serious abuse seriously. You lie when you say that people are your most important asset. Those people are literally just PM Keys numbers to you. How many defence members and veterans need to kill themselves before you stop obstructing the investigations of this Royal Commission and start to become part of the solution rather than part of the problem? You are the one, sorry, you are one of the big reasons so many service women and men are killing themselves and I hope that keeps you awake at night. This Royal Commission is the line in the sand. Which side of history will our senior leaders be on? We are watching.
Thank you, Dr Coleman. Commissioners, those are my questions, I yield to you and Millet Friend also has some questions.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Reverend. That is quite an account. I don't really have any particularly well-constructed questions, but just a couple of points of clarification. You were saying that when you were working at Russell offices and you had to be separated from your abuser, you were restricted to one building, your abuser was given reign of the other seven buildings?
That's correct.
And your exclusion included the area of the cafe. Was there any reason given to you to explain that split in terms of the geographical kind of boundaries?
So this particular person, my abuser, was a chaplain and the excuse given, actually the excuse wasn't given, I just assume it's the excuse was given, was so that they could conduct chaplaincy services in those other seven buildings. However, there was another chaplain on the chaplaincy team who could have done those. And in fact, we previously had a chaplaincy office. Sorry. So no consideration, I mean, I'm not a part of the decision for how that, how it was handled between my abuser after he had been found to have substantiated, except substantiated unacceptable behaviour against him. So I don't know how they decided to make that decision. There is actually a cafe in R1, but it's got a lot smaller and there's no real area to sit down and have a meal together. And there's limited amounts of sausage rolls and pies and that's about it and really good coffee. But in R2, there's more selection in regards to food. Also, I had meetings in other buildings that I couldn't go to. I had a meeting in R8 that I couldn't go to. I had meetings in R2 that I couldn't go to. It significantly impacted on my work.
And you also said that you were not welcome in the chaplain, in the air force chaplaincy branch. Can you just confirm to me how that was, how you knew that?
So the email from a senior chaplain identifying me as the reason for my abuser leaving, plus being uninvited from chaplaincy events, plus I received a number of hateful text messages that I was harming the branch by speaking out.
And just my final question, you told us of the advice you were given from Sempro, that they had no policies and procedures for reintegration of victims.
Yes.
So can you just, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but I'm just trying to get straight in my head, how many years Sempro would have been established by that time roughly? And do you have any sense of how many victims of sexual assault Sempro may deal with in a year who may be seeking reintegration?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I wouldn't know those details, but that would be on the Sempro website. Like it's, they are actually, they're in, their statistics are in the annual report for defence every year. I think at that stage, they'd been going for at least five years. I'd been working with them at least since 2017. So that, yep, that's my, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have those figures to my understanding. But I'm shocked that they don't have the capacity to assist either victims or command in reintegrating people back into a workplace because surely that's one of their main functions. Why is that not already available?
I guess that's where my thought was coming from as well. So I was just trying to see whether you could assist me in understanding perhaps the context for that, but I appreciate that that level of detail is not yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Reverend, too. My question relates to the Sempro issues as well. You said that you were invited to develop a policy for reintegration, but at that stage you didn't feel that you could do it. Do you know whether that invitation's been extended to somebody else to develop such a policy?
I would not be aware because I basically gave up with engaging with Sempro. So to be clear, the reason they asked me to write that policy is because that is part of what I was doing as the senior chaplain ethicist in defence, was writing policies and procedures for a wide range of organisations for a wide range of functions. So it wasn't completely out of the blue that they asked me to use my analysis and policy brain to assist them, but to ask a victim going through the process is completely unacceptable. I don't know if they've since gone and asked someone else. I really hope that they have. I'd be very excited if they actually had a process to assist victims in reintegrating back into workplaces now, but sadly, I suspect it's not. Maybe after today they will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. I just want to recap a little bit if I may. We do have time, I think. So you make a complaint against your abuser. You're encouraged at various points in time to, not wanting you to go ahead with the complaint. Eventually, it gets investigated, there's an outcome and 10 out of the 12 matters, stop me if I'm getting any of this wrong.
No, I will keep going, great.
10 out of the 12 substantiated or sustained. You're not told what action is going to be taken, if any, against the individual and then you find out later that they have been lifestyleled and in fact the emails sent around that diminish the culpability of the individual and in effect dismarch you and your reputation having, having made the complaint.
That is correct.
Okay. Then following that, you discover that your abuser has moved on to another role somewhere and your attempt to make sure that his new employer is informed of the history of this individual is then itself, the fact that you've done that is seen as a breach of his privacy.
That is correct.
In fact, they wouldn't tell you what action, if any, was to be taken against him because it would impinge on his privacy.
That is correct.
Okay. And I'm fairly familiar with the philosophy, principles and practice of victim care. And I have to just make the statement, it's outrageous that a victim of any sort of offence is not told of the outcome fully and about what action is to be taken against the perpetrator to protect the perpetrator's privacy. I think if civilian courts operated on that basis, it'd be held to pay. One other issue, your record of conversation, you were directed not to discuss these matters with the Royal Commission, among other agencies?
That email came later and it is complex, but I took it as direction to not speak to the Royal Commission. So I then, when I realised that was the case, I had successfully fought a medical discharge up at that point. I then decided that I would accept that medical discharge so that I could speak to the Royal Commission. The day after I left the ADF, I contacted the Royal Commission. So I left the ADF so that I could speak to you, sir, because I believed that I was directed to not speak to the Royal Commission. That is correct.
Thank you. All I can do is thank you and I'll say a little bit more at the end, but we'll just see if others have any questions to ask.
Thank you, sir.
Mr Coleman, is there anything you wish to ask?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I have five brief lines of inquiry, if I may. Dr Coleman, sorry, I'll just. Dr Coleman, I want to pick up on a piece of evidence that my learned friend induced earlier. It's not cocoa black, but army, there's nothing wrong with army ration-packed chocolate, is there?
No, army ration-packed chocolate's pretty good.
No, thank you. That was an important point and I appreciate that candour. Dr Coleman, I'm going to refer you to recommendation 11 of the interim report of this Royal Commission. And I'll just.
Trauma-informed practices?
Yeah, it's recommendation 11 is about embedding trauma-informed practices for information access. I want to speak about trauma-informed practices for the next couple of moments. I might just provide the document to Dr Coleman, if I may.
Certainly.
Oh, sorry, my friends have been showing that document.
I was saying that the associate can do it.
Sorry. Here to help. Now, Dr Coleman, it's entitled, as I say, embedding trauma-informed practices for information access. Firstly, as a chaplain involved in providing pastoral care and support services to defence members, how familiar are you with, or were you, are you with trauma-informed care and trauma-informed practices?
I would say that a trauma-informed approach is at the heart of a lot of what chaplaincy is about, informing, ensuring that we're looking after people and not harming them further.
So you've, you've applied trauma-informed practices in the course of your duties?
Professionally, yes.
Okay. What, if any, difficulty did you have accessing information from defence since the 11th of August 2022? That was when this interim report was handed down.
So whilst I was in defence, I requested not only permission to speak to the external bodies, but also to see documents. And I was told that I could put in an FOI request or get a court order to have a look at those documents. After I left defence, I did put an FOI request in and it was rejected on the basis that it would be too onerous for defence and it would impact on the capability effectively of air force. My argument against that was that they had the resources to create those documents in regard to my case and I would like to see them. I thought that was appropriate. Second to that, so that's one strand. Separate to that, though, the Royal Commission task force within defence have been fantastic. I've actually been really impressed, I don't know if I can name the person, at the task force was wonderful. She responded in a timely manner, provided me with my personnel file, my medical file, incident reports, sentinel reports, and I was actually really impressed with the trauma-informed approach taken by her. But the rest of defence, I couldn't get access to the documents in relation to my case. I'm blocked from those.
So it, I'm sorry, can we just get a non-publication order over that last name?
Oh, sorry, yep.
Yes, so ordered, thank you.
So, Dr Coleman, it follows that, what if any impact did the difficulties you encountered accessing documents have on you?
Significant impact because I still don't understand what happened. I have so many questions which are in my statement. I don't understand why so many leaders had the opportunity to actually turn this around at so many points and they never did. I just don't understand and so reading those documents would help me understand the decision-making of others and how that impacted on me. It's, it's made it very difficult for me to work through what happened because I don't have all the pieces of the puzzle.
So to what extent, if at all, was the approach taken by defence in terms of you accessing documents consistent with a trauma-informed approach? As you understand it?
The documents that I sought under the Royal Commission task force within defence absolutely gold standard trauma-informed approach. All the other documents, I would say, goes against any trauma-informed approach and once again highlights the privacy of my abuser and protecting his privacy outweighs anything in relation to my situation. So it's an anathema to trauma-informed approach. It's not.
Okay. And just to clarify, that was, you encountered these obstacles since the 11th of August 2022?
That is correct, yes.
So I'd like to revisit the complaints processes and Millet Friend touched on this to some extent, so we'll just touch on a few of these, a few of these points. In your statement at paragraph 149, you state, and you've given this evidence today, I didn't engage with the IG ADF because I wasn't confident that they were adequately independent. You, I'll now refer you to an article in the Australian newspaper dated the 12th of August 2023, that's the day after the interim report was handed down, and titled, "Breaking Through the ADF Glass Ceiling: Natasha Fox". Do you recall reading that article?
Yes, I had a couple of people send it to me.
Okay. Now, by its title, what did you expect or what would you expect the article to be about?
So breaking through the glass ceiling, I anticipated that the article would be about Lieutenant General Fox becoming the highest-ranked woman in the ADF and that she's broken the glass ceiling and a celebration of women going through the ranks.
Okay. And to your view, what was the article mostly about?
So the article was partly about that, but mostly was about talking about how transparent the ADF is and painting a very popular, a very positive picture of the ADF, which I understand why, but it was kind of a bit of a recruiting piece in some ways.
Okay. Now, again, we won't trample over ground that my friend has touched on, but Lieutenant General Fox in that article states, or talks about the Ombudsman and the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force being completely independent. Can I just revisit that for a moment? What are your thoughts about that?
I don't believe the IG ADF or the defence, well, I don't believe that the IG ADF is sufficiently independent and my experience of the Defence Ombudsman has not been someone who has contemporary complaints can take their concerns to. So I would say that I disagree with that statement.
Okay. And Lieutenant General Fox goes on to say, "The Ombudsman and the IG ADF make recommendations about where we need to make changes associated with military justice and complaints." Do you recall reading that, that section in the article?
Yes.
Dr Coleman, based on your experience providing pastoral care and indeed your personal experience, you've made a recommendation in your statement. Is that the case?
Yes, I've made several recommendations.
Sorry, in terms of, in terms of this sort of recommendation surrounding changes to the complaints process and military justice, yeah.
Yep.
I'll just draw you a tale. In fact, I'll invite you to read the second sentence of paragraph 152 of your statement, please.
"The ADF desperately needs an external oversight body that members can complain to in order to have bullying, harassment, abuse and discrimination stopped, investigated and dealt with in a timely, trauma-informed and transparent manner."
Now, this flows naturally into what I'll call weaponised administration or weaponised administrative processes. And you've, you've touched on this, so I'm going to build on the discussion you had with Mr Singleton about the rocks, the use of rocks as a tool to. about the rocks, the use of rocks as a tool to, if I can say, target ADF members.
Yes.
In your evidence to the Royal Commission today, you describe the use of a rock, a record of conversation, to counsel you, counsel you regarding you reporting your abuser to his professional standards unit. That's the case?
So I was counseled, but I was also told that the Defence Force would be reporting me to the Australian Privacy Commissioner for breaches of the Privacy Act. So more than counseled.
So it was pitched to you as being counselling. It was purportedly counselling.
That's what it says, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And in your statement, you state that rocks are negative.
I've never seen a positive one.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I'm just going to refer you to Recommendation 6 of a research paper of August 2023. It's entitled "Mapping Service and Transition to Self-Harm and Suicidality." Now, I understand it's on, or it is on the Royal Commission webpage, not in evidence, I don't understand. I understand not yet. Okay. I might just hand up, my friend has a copy of this extract. I'll hand up the relevant page. Pardon me, I'll provide the relevant page to Dr. Coleman. Okay. Could I just, thank you.
Thank you. Recommendation 6?
Your recommendation was, I'll just read some pieces first to save you reading it, Dr. Coleman. So I'm going to read the justification underpinning this recommendation before I read the actual recommendation. Justification, well, the relevant justification is, "The process of making a complaint and its investigation and resolution was often a source of secondary trauma for ex-service members who had already experienced trauma. The ADF needs to reduce the opportunity for administrative abuse to be perpetrated against members who make complaints." Dr. Coleman, how would you describe the rock process generally and the rock process that you were subjected to in terms of that concept of administrative abuse addressed in that recommendation?
I think in theory, rocks can be used to assist members to understand where they're having problems and to actually assist them to get better. However, my experience of rocks as a chaplain and personally is that it is, as this report by Ben Waddam and James Connor, I would argue that it is absolutely administrative abuse and that it compounds the trauma that you are working through. It doesn't, it's not a trauma-informed approach. It would be the opposite.
Okay. And have you heard of cases where ADF members are being threatened with being rocked?
I, as a chaplain, would hear that probably on a daily basis and I personally experienced that. My abuser threatened to rock me repeatedly.
Okay. And what did that tell you about this rock process, about what it really is?
That it's not used to assist members in how they can improve, but is actually used to threaten members. It's been weaponised effectively.
It's not counselling, no, is it?
Oh, no. Well, not from a pastoral perspective, no. I don't think it assists people when it's been weaponised.
Let's go and read Recommendation 6. The recommendation is, "Develop transparent and accountable complaint processes that are publicly reportable and inform the identification and governance of high-risk environments." Dr. Coleman, in light of your experience of the ADF complaints process, both personally and in your professional role, what are your thoughts about that recommendation?
Why don't we have it already? Would be, the fact that the recommendation is there indicates that there is a problem and my concern is that it shouldn't be needed. It should be already in place. It's 2023. It should already be in place. How many recommendations have come from how many inquiries prior to this?
Thank you. Let's just move on to transparency as a broad subheading. In 2022, you submitted a journal article on moral courage for the Australian Army Chaplaincy Journal. How did that submission of that article come about firstly?
So I was invited to write for the Australian Army Chaplaincy Journal on moral courage. The theme of the journal for that year was called "The Line in the Sand" and my article was titled "Moral Courage: When the Line in the Sand Demands a Response." So I was invited to submit. I put forward a draft. I actually went and sat, spent a couple of hours with the editor up here in Sydney and we worked through what was appropriate for the journal to make it more appropriate for the audience. It then went to a peer review process, where, blind peer review process, people who didn't know me looked at it. They made some suggestions, some I accepted, some I didn't, and it was then accepted for publication.
And it was accepted for publication subject to any other...
Oh, sorry, accepted for publication subject to the approval of the Office of the Chief of Army.
Okay, so what happened in terms of the Office of the Chief of Army?
So in November 2022, the Office of the Chief of Army provided feedback on my article and we went backwards and forwards. That was provided by email through the editor of the journal. And some of that feedback I accepted because it was absolutely spot-on. I accidentally named someone I shouldn't have named and some of that I believed was stifling discussion, particularly around sexual abuse. And so I didn't accept that particular feedback.
Who in the Office of Chief of Army provided that feedback?
So that email was provided by Lieutenant General Natasha Fox.
Back then, Major General, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, back then, Major General, yes, that's correct.
And at that stage, Major General Fox was Deputy Chief of Army, is that...
Deputy Chief of Army, that is my understanding, yes.
Were there any parts of that feedback from Major General Natasha Fox that you did not, that did not result in you changing the article?
So I softened the discussion around how the ADF handles sexual abuse because she objected to me saying that I didn't think the ADF handled it well. And I was happy to soften that because I was happy to accept that the ADF is actually trying. There was some other discussion around sexual abuse more generally that I was determined to leave in, particularly the material from, there's a group of women who are calling themselves, I think it's the Uniform Justice Campaign, and I was prepared to leave that in because it was published in newspapers in Australia. So I felt that there was evidence to back up the proposition that I was saying, which was, "The ADF is not handling sexual abuse well enough and we need to do better."
Just to clarify, the Uniform Justice Campaign, what was that about?
So the uniform, my understanding of the Uniform Justice Campaign, from what I've read in the newspapers, is that it's a number of women who have been subject to sexual abuse in the ADF who do not feel that their cases have been handled adequately and they've gone public with their names and faces and stories in order to encourage the ADF to do better. That's, I'm not associated with it, that's just from me reading their articles.
You may have answered this, but I just want to clarify. Why did you not make some of those changes as recommended, I suggested by, in the feedback from General Fox?
Because I thought, in an article about moral courage, we have to have courage and talk about the difficult things. And we can't change the way unacceptable behaviour, especially bullying and sexual assault, is handled unless we can name it and then actually talk about how we can make it better. So I was willing to soften some of the language around it, but I wasn't willing to remove it.
So, and you fed that back?
Yeah, through the editor. I was actually in hospital at the time, so I was writing notes on my iPad, reading them to my husband down the phone, who was typing them up and emailing them through for me.
Okay. So what happened next with that article in terms of publication by the Army?
So I then received...
I'm sorry to object, Mr. Columice. We have a two-hour rule in terms of the transcription services. Do you have much further to go or...
I'll be, I've got one other area to cover, another, what can I say, five minutes?
I think we can manage that, thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to cut it off.
So I received a text message from the editorial staff of the journal who advised me that Chief of Army had made the decision to remove the article from the journal based on, "This is not the narrative we want in Army."
Okay. This is not the narrative we want in Army.
That is correct.
Now, you subsequently read the article about Lieutenant General Natasha Fox in the Australian newspaper?
Yep.
Did anything strike you as being the major emphasis in that article? Any particular aspect?
Well, the big emphasis, particularly for the second half of the article, is around that the ADF is transparent.
Okay. Now, considering your experience that General Fox gave feedback for you to remove parts of your article, your proposed article, your draft article, and the Chief of Army's office then rejected the article outright because it wasn't the narrative Army wanted?
Objection to that question. That was not the evidence. It was discussions around the tone of the article. My understanding is the evidence was not removed.
I can change the wording. My learned friend is correct. To alter the article, to amend the article, is that a better, is that more accurate? How would you describe the feedback from Major, from General Fox?
That the discussion around sexual assault needed to either be removed or completely toned down.
Okay, okay, thank you. So just getting back to my line of inquiry, considering your experience that the Office of the Chief of Army asked you, well, that General Fox asked you to remove or tone down the discussion about sexual assault, and the article was subsequently withdrawn as a result of a decision by the Office of Chief of Army because it didn't fit the Army's narrative on the one hand and General Fox's statements about the amount of transparency in the ADF on the other, what do you say about that?
I think there's a clash there in messaging, so my experience was that it's not transparent.
Okay.
So I was concerned about the messaging coming across that the ADF is already transparent. I really hope she can bring transparency. I think, I'm really excited that we have a woman at that rank, in that position, and I'm really excited about what she might do. But at the moment, I'm not seeing actions to back that. I'm really hoping that she is the person that can bring about cultural change, particularly in regards to UB with bullying and, but also sexual assault, so I'm really hopeful. But what concerns me is the discussion, the statement that the ADF is transparent because they're not there yet. We need them to be able to name bullying and sexual harassment as a problem in Defence and until we can say that, and then we can't move on. So to just say we are transparent, I'm not, as a chaplain and as a person, I've not seen that yet. So I'm hoping she was misquoted and that she is working towards the ADF becoming transparent.
And you, in fact, make these quite positive comments about General Fox.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. She has had a massive impact, a positive impact on chaplaincy.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to defence capability very quickly, Dr. Coleman. Major General Fox was at one stage the Head of Defence People Capability. That's your understanding?
That's my understanding, yes.
And now Lieutenant General Fox is the Chief of Defence Personnel?
That is my understanding, yes.
What focus do you believe that these roles, the two roles of General Fox, place on people as a defence capability?
I think the roles align with the statement that Defence says that people is their best asset, but I'm not seeing that from decisions from people lower ranked than her.
Okay. I just want to draw your attention to paragraph 15 of your statement, where you talk about obstacles to the promotion of female chaplains.
Which part?
I think the whole thing talks. Well, let's see.
Yep.
Yep, you got paragraph 15?
Yes.
What was the military reasoning behind this issue with the promotion of female chaplains?
I wouldn't argue that it was the military reasoning, but the reason myself and other female chaplains were given was that male chaplains would be unhappy if females were promoted above them and that they would refuse to serve under women in 2022.
Okay, and what impact would that have? What was the military impact as...
That it would impact on capability because male chaplains would refuse to serve under female chaplains. My thinking there is maybe they're not suited to Defence chaplaincy and they should go back to their congregations.
Okay. So just to wrap up this, wrap this up. So if people are a capability in Defence, which I think you agreed they are...
Absolutely.
What impact do you believe a refusal, or an obstacle rather, to promote based on gender could have on capability?
It's not promoting the best person based on merit. It encourages a whole heap of problems, including promoting from a boys' club type of perspective. And that's going to have a significant impact on capability because we don't have the best people actually in the role. It needs to be the best person who can either be the support chaplain or lead a team rather than what their gender is or what their sexuality is.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Coleman, for your moral courage and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fordham. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, any matters arising?
Just one question for clarification. In respect of the article on moral courage which you prepared for the Australian Army Chaplaincy Journal,
Yes.
after all the back and forth about what it would contain, was it published in that journal or not?
So, no, it was removed a few days before it went to print. It has subsequently been published into the International Journal of Ethical Leadership a few, last week, just by coincidence. So, yes, it was removed from publication and it was the lead article, so it left a hole.
That's all. We're respectfully proposing that you might adjourn until 2.30.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you very much for your evidence. Thank you for your moral courage, as Mr. Columice says. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your evidence. Thank you for all you've done thus now. I would hope that your statement is mandatory reading for the relevant ministers and for the leadership of the ADF. You've brought out so many issues that must be looked at, must be addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. We know it's not easy reliving things. We know that. But it's been absolutely invaluable for this commission to hear from you directly.
Thank you, sir. I'm not speaking. The reason I've spoken is I'm not speaking for me. There are thousands of people who are in the same situation as me. I had one and two stars advocating on my behalf. What hope has a private or a leading aircraft woman got if she's in the same situation? So I'm speaking for them rather than for me. So thank you, sir.
We understand. Your excuse from your son has to appear today and we wish you every success.
Thank you.
Will adjourn till 2.30?
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will adjourn until 2.30. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Miss Smallinga.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioners, on the 25th of August 2023 pursuant to Section 6D3 of the Royal Commission's Act 1902, the Commission made a direction in the form of a non-publication direction that certain witnesses not be identified and given evidence and that they be referred to using a pseudonym. That direction applies to this next witness, Commissioners, and the pseudonym is MB2. Commissioners, I call MB2. Can MB2 be affirmed, please?
Do you, MB2, solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Do you, MB two, solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
MB two, am I correct in saying that you made a statement to the Commission dated twenty-one August twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that's right.
Pardon me. Commissioners, there are two versions of MB two's statement. An unredacted version provided to the Commission and a redacted version with personal information and confidential matters redacted. Operator, can you display the redacted version of MB two's statement and scroll to the first page, please? MB two, do you recognise this as the statement you've provided to the Royal Commission?
Yes, I do.
And is that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
It is.
Commissioners, I tender the redacted version of the statement as a public exhibit and the unredacted version as a confidential exhibit.
Thank you, they'll be accepted on that basis and admitted into evidence in the allocated the next lot of numbers, thank you.
MB two, I understand you are here to give evidence today on a reasonably confined topic. Can you outline to the Commission generally on what you're speaking about today?
Yeah, I'm speaking about my experience with the IG ADF inquiry following the death of my husband.
Thank you. And before we turn to that, am I right to understand that you have served with the ADF?
Yes, that's right.
How was it that you met your husband?
We met when they were both posted to Townsville as junior officers in two thousand and seven.
And was he also a serving member?
Yes, he was.
And can you tell the Commissioner a little bit about your husband's health?
Yep, so my husband's sorry.
Please take your time, there's no rush.
Thank you. Yeah, so his mental health started to decline in two thousand and nine. And he really battled on and off with major depression for years. And that progressively worsened, I would say from about two thousand well, two thousand and nine on and off, but really worsening from maybe two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, until eventually he died by suicide in the middle of two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. And did you know that after your husband passed away, there would be any investigation into his death?
No, I did not. I was, we'd obviously been through the coroner's investigation, the coroner's report, but other than that, I had no idea there would be any further investigation.
And when did you become aware?
In February two thousand and twenty-two was the first I, the first notification I had about that, and that was by an email from someone, from one of the officers at work.
And what did that email tell you?
It, well, the subject heading of it was IG ADF Inquiry or Investigation Into the Death of My Husband's Name. And the content of that pretty much just said that someone from the IG ADF was going to be in contact with me about this investigation. I really didn't understand what that was about.
And did you know who the IG ADF was at that point?
So the only reference I had was to do with the Afghan Inquiry. That was the only thing I knew of IG ADF. And so it really, it gave me quite a fright when I got that email, because I just, I was quite confused, thinking, well, what's the Afghan Inquiry got to do with my husband? And we knew people who'd been, I guess, affected by that inquiry and by all accounts it had been a really negative and daunting process. And so, yeah, I was quite confused and a bit scared by that.
And when were you subsequently contacted?
So it wasn't until the next month, in March, that I did get any contact from the Office of the IG ADF to talk about what the inquiry was about.
And what, what form was that contact in?
So I got a text message first to say that I was going to get a call, and then I received a phone call.
And what did they tell you on the phone call?
They explained to me that the investigation was something that they do for deaths of people who had served, and particularly suicides. And that the, the purpose of that was to, I guess, understand whether the defence could have done anything differently. Yeah.
Were they trying to get you to give any information in that call?
Um, no, I don't think so. They sort of set out that they would be interviewing me and, and asking me for other people that I thought might be of relevance, that they might interview. They did offer that I could be involved or not involved. But yeah.
And did they subsequently interview you?
They did, but it wasn't until May that year.
So they made arrangements for an interview and they called you in March?
Yes, they told me that they would be interviewing me sometime in May, they didn't make the date then, but they told me it would be early May. And yeah, that I would wait to hear more, I guess. Yeah.
And did the interview take place in early May?
It did, but not, not the way that they had indicated. So when they spoke to me, they said that they were going to come across here, fly over and interview me in person in the first week of May. And then at the last minute, they said that they no longer could fly over for situations beyond their control, and it would have to be the following week. But I was already due to be away with work, and they knew that, that I'd given them the dates that I was going to be away. So then they conducted the interview with me via phone call in the first week of May.
I see. And, and you said in your statement that you would have preferred to have the meeting face to face rather than over the phone, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely, I think it was a really, really personal and traumatic conversations to be having. And to do it via phone was very non-personalized. Yeah, and, yeah, it was, I would much rather have done it face to face.
And at this point, you have been contacted by the IG ADF by text message, then a call, and then an interview over the phone. Were you offered support during this process?
They suggested to me that I could have a support person with me. And so I opted to do that, I had the psychologist from work as a friend as well sat with me through that phone call.
And were you offered any other support?
No.
And did you get any information in those early stages about when, what the process of the investigation would be and a likely timeframe for the report?
Yeah, in the, in the early stages of the contact, they, the investigator said to me that he hoped to have it finished up, or at least a draft report ready to go by July twenty twenty-two, was my understanding. But yeah, it's just that we're well and truly pushed out.
And I'll come back to that timeframe in a moment, but that first indication you just mentioned of July twenty twenty-two, did you say that was made in around May twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, I believe so, I, yeah, I believe it was around the first, around the interview time that he said that.
So at that point, they're envisaging it may take only around three months.
That was my understanding, yeah.
Thank you. And did you receive a copy of the draft report in July twenty twenty-two?
No.
Have you currently received a copy of the report?
No.
Have you been in contact with the Office of the IG ADF since your interview in May twenty twenty-two?
Yes, so they contacted me a few times to seek further information, further clarification. You know, I've actually provided a lot of extra information, saw hospital records for them. And, but the contact's been really very sporadic. And sometimes it's been myself or another of my husband's family reaching out to try and get an update. Yeah, because that months, months could go by without us hearing any more.
And were you able to get a sense that the conduct of the inquiry was progressing in those intervening periods?
Sometimes, yes. I guess at times when I got an update that they had interviewed, you know, finished their interviews with his colleagues or that sort of thing, it felt like it was progressing, but then months would go by and then nothing, or I'd hear things had been delayed because of someone's, someone had Covid, someone had an injury. There's been staff changeovers. So there's been times where I had no idea whether it's progressing or not.
And did you ever seek someone to try to take on that role for you in terms of advocating for you or chasing the Office of the IG ADF?
No, because I, I guess I don't really have a sense of who could do that.
Thank you. Now, you said you haven't yet received a copy of the draft report, do you have an indication as to when you may?
Yeah, the latest indication we've heard is that we might have it in September this year.
Okay. So at that point, it's likely to be around fourteen months or more since your original interview, is that right?
That's right.
Can I ask you to reflect a little on this experience about what you consider to be the flaws in the process and how they might be improved?
So I think giving realistic timeframes upfront would have been really helpful because it does weigh on your mind. You know, what's it going to say, how's it going, you know, the impact of it, receiving the report. So every time there's sort of a timeframe that comes and goes, I'm spending, you know, I'm spending lots of time thinking about, okay, we're coming up to July, or we're coming up to the end of the month that they said, and, you know. And then that time just comes and goes, and without hearing any update to say, oh, actually, sorry, this is now our new timeframe. It's really, it's exhausting and emotional. So that would be one thing. Definitely conducting those interviews in person or making a plan and sticking to it would be great.
And did you feel that you had to carry the burden of initiating communication?
Yeah, a lot of the time I have been chasing up information, which I guess is not really my job, but yeah, I, I guess I haven't known when we're going to get an update unless I've had to chase that up.
And were you offered any legal support during the process?
So I got an email early on from the Office of the IG ADF saying that there would be a reserve legal officer, that naming a reserve legal officer, saying that they'd been allocated to act in my husband's and, and his family's, our, our interest, which for one thing, I didn't really understand because I thought, why does he need a, why does he need a lawyer acting in his interests? I don't think this is an investigation into his, in doing anything wrong, so I didn't really understand that. But also, they were seeking permission for that person to contact me. And I said, yes, they can contact me, but they never contacted me.
So you've had no contact with the legal officer at all?
None, no.
And no legal support provided?
No.
Thank you. And can I ask you to reflect, I understand it's a highly emotional topic, on what the impact has been on you of, of these sporadic bits of communication and the delay in the report?
It's really, it's really stretched out. Yeah, part of the, I guess, part of the grieving process. Because, yeah, all of these things, there's so much that happens after someone dies and there's more more questions than answers with suicide. So, you know, it's been a long journey to here and the, all of the outstanding things is something that, you know, you're anticipating. And this, in particular, the IG ADF report, I have put a lot of emotional energy into. Because I think it's important and I think it's, hopefully, I'm hoping it's really useful. So, yeah, I just feel like I've been in a constant sort of limbo waiting for the outcome or waiting for the report. Yeah, because this is the most detailed inquiry. From my understanding, it's far more, a far deeper investigation than what the coroner's report was. So to me, it's going to be a really big deal when it is released, when we get the report. And I think it's a document that, you know, might give us some answers, we're never going to have all the answers, but might give us some more answers, and I just don't know. So this, yeah, there's quite a lot of energy goes into waiting for it. So yeah, to have it sort of pushed out and can feel like it's continuing to be pushed out and pushed out, I haven't really got any faith yet anymore in the deadline of when it's actually going to be complete. So I'm just still waiting.
Thank you. I'll now give the Commissioners a chance to ask you any questions. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you very much. Could I just ask, in relation to the communication and the fact that it was irregular and somewhat, you know, unpredictable, I guess, what, what would have felt supportive, you know, what, what would you have preferred in terms of a frequency of contact? Just so that I have some sense?
Yeah, so I guess maybe even if there was a schedule, you know, if there was a, you know, every two months, we're going to check in with you, let you know where it's, where it's up to. And I guess if I knew that that was what I could expect, then I could sort of let it go between times and not either be surprised by it coming out of the blue or just waiting with no, yeah, no knowledge of when I was going to get any kind of update.
So it was not necessarily the frequency per se, but, but the predictability?
Yeah, probably both. Yeah, both, because there would, could be six months of nothing. And you sort of feel, you know, is it, is that, that we've just gone to the bottom of the pile? Or is that it's really taking a long time to investigate? Is there something that they've found that's taking a long time to investigate? You know, there's so many questions when you hear nothing.
Yeah, okay. And, and can I ask, in terms of the actual engagement with the IG ADF aside from that irregularity of the contact, was it supportive, did it feel supportive?
To be honest, I, I have been fairly comfortable with the contact, you know, when I have spoken to the investigator, I was, you know, quite pleased with that this is the person investigating. I felt that he was taking the time to kind of get to know my husband, he got a good sense of him, you know, I kind of, I did get a positive sense of this person is, is really trying to understand him and what happened. So from that sense, you know, I was, I was comfortable.
Okay, thank you. And, and you said that you were hoping that this is a bit more of a big deal in a sense than the coroner's investigation. Can you give me just a sense of what came from the coroner's investigation? Was it, was there an inquest, was it just a finding?
Yeah, so no, there was no inquest, it was just a finding, so that ended up being a very short report that mostly just reflected on the days, or the day of my husband's death. It didn't, it just scratched the surface.
And I'm sure Commissioner Carlos will probably ask you some more questions about that. And I'm sure Commissioner Cowles will probably ask you some more questions about that after, so I won't ask them. But my last question is in relation to, you said that when they contacted, they explained that the investigation is in part to see whether defence could have done more in relation to, I guess, preventing a husband's death. Do you want to offer any comments as to whether or not you personally think they could have done more? Just from your perspective? And if you don't feel comfortable, please...
That's okay, it's a big question. Look, I think, I think that while he was in full-time service, there was some decisions that were made in terms of posting us apart when he was really struggling with his mental health that shouldn't have happened. There was a few things along those lines. I also think that the defence health system prevents people from getting, from being open with how much they're struggling. And I think in my husband's case, it prevented him from really engaging in the care as well as he could have because he didn't want to be, you know, potentially downgraded and losing his job. You know, he really loved his job, even as a reservist. So I think that some of the processes and policies that stand in defence that prevented him from engaging in the care that he should have.
Thank you very much and thank you for your evidence today.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you from me as well for your evidence. I wanted to ask you a little bit more about the coroner's investigation. Had it occurred before February 2022 when you first learnt of the IGADF's interest?
So the interviews had occurred prior to that, but the report wasn't released until April this year.
And were you interviewed by state police?
Yes, yeah.
Which state were you in?
Western Australia.
Was there any indication from the state police who interviewed you that there was likely to be an IGADF involvement as well?
No, that doesn't...
When the IGADF, sorry. When the IGADF became involved, was there any indication that they had been in touch with the state police to get the coroner's report?
Yes, there was. And mostly the sense I got was that the West Australian Coroners were very, very slow and not forthcoming with providing information to IGADF. I think eventually they did, but the sense I was getting was that it wasn't a smooth process.
Was there any indication of cooperation between the IGADF and the WA Police Force?
The sense I was getting was the opposite, that the West Australian Police Force were not being very open in providing the reports. I know that they eventually did, but I didn't, I got the sense that it was not simple.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you, Witness. I just have a couple of issues. So the first contact you had after your husband passed obviously looked like it came from IG and that caused you some concerns. Was it, you mentioned it was an email, I think?
Yeah, that's right. It was an email from one of the officers within my workplace to letting me know that the IGADF were going to be contacting me.
Okay. I mean, I'm guessing what you're telling us is it could have been handled differently so that it didn't alarm you when you received it with the, you know, the email address and everything else? Is that the case?
Yeah, I think if someone had spoken to me, and especially if I'd been warned earlier, you know, my husband had died eight months before that and I'd heard nothing about it. So I wasn't anticipating it. And, yeah, if they'd spoken to me and explained this is going to happen and this is why, that would have been really different.
Yeah, I understand. Just in relation to the coroner's matter, so you were interviewed by the state police? And you mentioned that you received the, you know, a finding of some sort from the coroner's, the state coroner. How did you receive that? Was it in the mail or...?
It ended up coming via email. That had taken quite a lot of chasing and pushing from myself and my sister-in-law because that actually was similar to this, that it kept, the deadlines kept getting pushed out and out and out and out. And eventually, my sister-in-law went and sat in their office until they finished it and handed it over and sent it via email to me.
So in terms of receiving it, there was no support around you when you got it? They just emailed it, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Did you at any stage receive any offer of counselling or support from the coroner's office?
They provided a pamphlet right after my husband passed. And I'm sure in the pamphlet it had some phone numbers that you could contact the counsellor through the coroner's.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone discuss with you at any stage whether you wanted an inquest, whether you would request one or whether you had the right to ask the coroner to hold an inquest? Was that offered up?
No, not in my, not to my memory.
Okay.
No.
I understand, okay. Thank you. Miss Sackler, is there any questions from the Commonwealth?
No questions, Commissioner.
Thank you. Miss Mullinow, any matters arising?
Nothing arising, Commissioners. I, just on behalf of those assisting the Commission, wanted to thank the Witness for evidence and express our condolences about the death of her husband.
Yes, thank you. We know this isn't easy, but it's important for us and for the Commission and for the public to hear about some of these problems. Thank you for your evidence. Thank you for being, you know, willing to put your story there. And your excuse for my summer's to appear, obviously, for today, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Are there any other matters from anyone?
Nothing, Commissioners. I think that it's just for the Commission to be adjourned until 8.30 tomorrow morning.
Yes, okay, thank you. So we'll adjourn until tomorrow morning, 8.30. Thank you.
We'll rise. The Royal Commission into Defence of Veteran Suicide will adjourn to 8.30 AM the 30th of August.